We can wait a few minutes.
No, we can go ahead and call it over.
Okay.
This is the city council meeting of Monday, the 20th of November.
Yes, I'd like to -- good evening, Lake Forest. Welcome to the November 20th city council meeting. Will the city attorney please call the roll?
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Newman is absent. Alderman Rommel?
Here.
Alderman Tac is absent. Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Mayor Lansing?
Here.
Quorum's president.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item of business is reports of city officers, starting with the mayor. First, I'd like to acknowledge the effectiveness and resourcefulness of the Lake Forest Police Department in recent weeks with respect to two serious crimes. As many of you may have noticed this afternoon, an arrest was made with respect to the attempted burglary on Northwestern Avenue, and that individual, a juvenile, is now in custody. The circumstances of that individual and that particular crime are similar in one sense to the homicide in West Lake Forest about a month ago in that when you look at all the facts and circumstances, they have almost nothing to do with the city of Lake Forest and its citizenry. With respect to the homicide and the fullness of time, it may prove out that there's really only one individual reasonably definable as a citizen of Lake Forest that was involved. In the case of the juvenile, very unusual and sad circumstances. So, not systemic to Lake Forest, but the ability and, as I say, the effectiveness of the policing in coming to an arrest and getting that resolved is much appreciated by all. Secondly, this Friday, 5:00, the 34th Annual Tree Lighting Ceremony in Lake Forest, featuring thousands of twinkling lights. This annual event is presented by the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation and sponsored by Lake Forest Bank &amp; Trust. It's become a traditional gathering of family, friends, and visitors to the community. There's many activities, starting at 1:00. A holiday movie will be shown at Gorton, Market Square III. There will be events and activities for the whole family to enjoy, including an ice sculpting performance beginning at 3:00 PM. And all the details are on the city website. One alert is that Western Avenue between Deer Path and Westminster will be closed to vehicular traffic from 2:00 PM to 5:30 PM. That concludes the mayor's remarks. I turn to the city manager, Bob Kiley.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, we're very blessed in this community to have a number of fine educational institutions, and this evening we have one represented. Bob Whalen, the head of schools, is here and is going to talk to us about what's going on at Country Day. Bob?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Bob Whalen. I'm head of school at Lake Forest Country Day. We are in our 130th year as an educational institution in Lake Forest. If you think about starting in 1888, how much has changed in schools. And yet, there are still things that are the same. That, if you actually think about the very best educational experiences any one of us ever had, routinely, it's really focused on a relationship. It's a teacher who took the time to get to know and understand a child, that it's relationships between human beings and relationships of ideas. And for us as a school in our 130th year, what's exciting is how do we continue to, first, build the school around that concept, and then, second, find the ways that tradition marries with innovation, which is certainly a theme in the city of Lake Forest. For us, we're a school that begins with students aged 2 through 8th grade. That's a pretty seismic developmental span there. This is our 10th anniversary of our two-year-old program that we call First Step. And one of the things that we love in our school is that our older students learn every bit as much from our younger students. The hands-on learning that we really build the school around, project-based. We know that when we use that and kids attach meaning to that, and then there's emotion, they never forget it. With, speaking of partnership, the city of Lake Forest, and I'm looking at Kathy and Bob and others who've really helped us continue to grow and evolve as a school in terms of our facility. Two years ago, we designed and built a 2,800-square-foot innovation lab. As we think about the future for our kids, we know they're going to need to be kids of character, who can work together effectively, think critically, think creatively, and communicate an idea thoughtfully and cogently. But we also want to give them an opportunity to create new meaning, because we all have access to the same information out there through our iPhones or our Androids. But how do you curate that? And how do you come up with something new? And so, it's exciting to be part of that journey. At the same time, things that feel very traditional to us, that are things that we prize in Lake Forest, the opportunity to be part of a team. This past summer, again, thanks to the city's involvement, we were able to renovate our gymnasium. So, take a space that has served the school extremely well for the last 40 years, and how do we find a way to reanimate that in a way that more effectively supports the needs of our kids and gives children an opportunity to experience what it's like to be part of a team and to learn to rise and fall together? How do you win gracefully? And how do you respond to the lessons you can learn from when it doesn't go quite so well? This coming summer, we'll renovate our performing arts space. For us, the whole child, academics, athletics, and the arts is essential. And again, that's been another effort that we've been able to work in conjunction with the city to honor both the long-term historical footprint that we're really blessed to be able to inhabit and do that in a way that both carries that tradition and intersection with innovation. Final piece is our school's commitment to responsible citizenship. It was very important to us, a week and a half ago, we had our Veterans Day assembly, and several people in the room attended. For us, the opportunity to have our children recognize that they're part of something larger than themselves has always been important to us and at the center of what our school stands for. We have a longstanding partnership with Great Lakes Naval, and the children of many students from Great Lakes Naval attend our school. And our featured speaker was commander of the base, Captain Jim Hawkins. And again, for our kids to see how blessed we are to live in a community like this and to recognize that these things don't just happen by accident. It's people who are committed citizens locally and then protecting those ideas globally. The final piece would be our Foundations of Education series, where we bring in two national experts every year. This year, we were fortunate to bring Dr. Lisa Demore, author of the book Untangled: The Seven Transitions to Adulthood for Adolescent Girls, and then Dr. Mark Brackett, who's the director of the Center for Emotional Intelligence in Yale. And one of the things that's so important to us is those lectures are free and open to the public. We have an average of 250 people packed into our atrium, and perhaps in the future, that'll be in our renovated performing arts center. And what's so important to us is that partnership that we have with Lake Forest Public Schools, with Lake Forest College, where we look to share those resources and those opportunities for one another. Because that virtuous cycle that has been part of the experience for our school for so long, and certainly my professional experience, has been a real gift. So, wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak on the school's behalf, and thank you in advance for the next 130 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Not for me. You've been an admirable leader of the school, and say it ain't so that you're moving on next year.
So, this is, this will be my last year. One of the things, as a family school, we have aging parents in the Northeast, and so we will be headed back with, oftentimes, people will say with mixed emotions. For us, it's deep sadness that we'll miss a community that we've loved for the last five years. And so, we will be enjoying every last moment, beginning Friday with the tree lighting here in the city. And you'll probably see way too much of us over the course of the next eight months.
We'll be missing you.
Thank you.
Alderman Moreno.
Every time I walk into your facility, I wish I were a kid again so I could hang out there more. You know, I've wondered what your total student population is, because the class pictures that I've seen are so, they're small.
Yeah. So, we're 402 total students, which for us represents some growth. We were about 350 in 2013, so we've grown. Two-thirds of our students in our grades pre-K through 4 come from Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, and as we get into the middle school, people come from a little further afield.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question.
So, so sorry that you're leaving, and especially recently had two grandchildren graduate, and my daughter also played a role with the teachers and on your board, and they all had outstanding comments for you, and very sorry to hear that you're leaving us. But do you wish her the best?
Well, I appreciate that, and I will tell you in no uncertain terms that the culture of the school is so sound and will far outlast me, and I'll look forward to coming back and visiting.
Bob, I would just say, I happened to be present for the Veterans Day celebration. It was very moving. Wonderful participation by both kids and the intersection between the kids and the adults present. Great honoring of all the veterans who were present. It was really very powerful, and I appreciate you reaching out to include those of us who were able to come. Hopefully, that's a tradition that will continue. I'm going to prefer not to think about you leaving, because I think it will be, yeah, but you're leaving, you're leaving the school in terrific, terrific shape.
Thank you.
And as a past parent of kids at Lake Forest Country Day, and actually, my husband was at the Bell School, which merged with the day school, so as part of your history, having a good leader and things in really good shape is going to make it easier to attract somebody else, as much as we'll miss you. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Prue. I really appreciate it.
Say it ain't so.
Yeah.
I just want to say, the impact you've had on the school has been extraordinary, and it's just hard to overstate how dramatic the program has become, and the quality of the program is just extraordinary. So, congratulations.
Thank you, and I feel I bask in the reflected glow of some incredibly talented teachers and knowledge of kids.
Who'd have thunk a rock band impresario?
There you go.
End up in those.
Mike and Lee, thank you very much.
That completes my report for this evening.
Next is comments by council members. First, I'd like to ask the Finance Committee Chair Jed Morris and Barry Hollingsworth, Chair of the Elloa Farm Commission, to come forward and present Elloa Farm's fiscal 2019 budget.
Yeah, I just want to comment, we have two extraordinary community organizations that have had, like the day school, a long history here in terms of Gorton and Elloa, perhaps not so long, but equally dramatic, and we're happy you're here. This is a one-time event at the end of each year, where we hear what's happened in the year and look forward to the budget for next year. So, Barry, want to introduce anybody?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Ned. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm going to start out with a quick backdrop. The Elloa Farm Foundation is responsible for managing the day-to-day operations of Elloa Farm. And the role of the Elloa Farm Commission, that's who I represent, is to serve as an advisory board to the city council. And so, we, the commission, are charged with overseeing the operations, and that includes daily usage, building and capital improvements, and finances of Elloa Farm. As part of that role, we work very closely with the foundation to make sure that this city-owned facility is being taken care of and remains solvent and is operating under the conditions and standards as set forth under the master plan, special use permit, and the operating agreement. As chairman of the Elloa Farm Commission, I have the honor of presenting the 2018 proposed budget, and this budget has been prepared by the foundation finance committee and approved by the Elloa Farm Foundation Board.
Hey, Barry, can you talk more into the microphones so everybody at home can hear you?
My voice carried.
That's all right.
Okay. It was presented to the Elloa Farm Commission, which has recommended submitting it this evening to city council for approval. Several pieces of information have been provided to you in your packet this evening, and I want to take a moment here to highlight some of the observations that I, along with the rest of the commission, have noted throughout the year. First, I want to acknowledge that we've had another very successful year at Elloa Farm Foundation due to the efforts of the foundation to promote the facility and attract visitors from near and far. One such effort this past year has been the tremendously successful Centennial Campaign. And as you know, and many of you know, that 2017 marked the centennial celebration of Elloa Farm, and that's 100 years since the Armour family built and occupied this farm in Lake Forest. To honor this celebration, the foundation held a series of events this past summer, including a 100th summer celebration and a presentation of the storyboards created by the Lake Forest-Lake Bluff Historical Society back in June. In July, a family day at the farm, and then most recently, we held, or they held, the Diamonds and Dalias event in September. This campaign not only paid homage to the history of Elloa, but provided the foundation opportunities to engage existing donors and build new relationships with future supporters. The campaign raised over $290,000 in support of the foundation's programs. And less expenses, it is projected to net $140,000 in support beyond budget. Here are some highlights of the budget. We are anticipating growth in sponsorship and donation activities as a result of both the Centennial Campaign and new strategies that will be implemented by the foundation during the upcoming year. Additionally, having the greenhouse available this spring has provided additional revenue potential for the garden market. The foundation is anticipating increased expenses as they relate to personnel and staffing. Support staff for communications, marketing, and development has been added to assist with the sponsorship and fundraising efforts, along with support staff for the kitchen, which will help provide catering support and capacity for programs and events. Revenue is gained through both operating activities and fundraising. In 2017, operating revenues are projected to account for just over half of total revenue. In 2018, operating activity is proposed to account for closer to 60%, primarily due to the foundation's conservative budget approach for fundraising. The 2018 proposed budget shows a modest decrease in rentals and catering revenues and an increase in garden market revenues when compared to the 2017 budget. Rentals and catering revenues account for third-party uses, and that includes corporate retreats, private parties, weddings, and other events. These activities account for a quarter of total revenues. The other operating activity categories are in line with both projected and actual revenue On the fundraising side, the 2018 budget is proposing a modest increase in event fundraising support. This accounts for support that is projected to be gained through sponsorships, tickets, donations, and other activities during Elloa fundraising events. And much like other nonprofits during this time of the year, budgeting for next year's annual campaign can be difficult, which is why the projections have been estimated conservatively in 2017. In 2018, the foundation is anticipating annual gifts will remain in line with past Since 2013, the foundation's cash position has increased substantially, and we are anticipating the cash position in 2017 to remain strong. As of September, the foundation's unrestricted cash was at $732,000, which covers approximately 15 months of monthly overhead expenses. As part of the 2018 budget discussion, the Elloa Farm Commission has reviewed and considered two proposed fee changes, which include increasing the hay barn rental rate for the Wildlife Discovery Center, as well as a facility use fee for field trips. With regard to the hourly rental rate for the hay barn, the foundation requested increasing this rate to a standard nonprofit rate that's charged to other nonprofit organizations. Currently, the Wildlife Discovery Center is charged a discounted rate. The intent of increasing this rate is to offer the foundation the opportunity to recover the same level of fees that other nonprofits would be paying to utilize this space. The facility use fee is designed to recover expenses relating to the impact of wear and tear on the facility from large field trips that take place on this site. The commission reviewed both fees and recommended that they be approved as part of this annual budget process. However, since this recommendation was made, new information has been presented to me regarding the facility use fees' conflict with existing Wildlife Discovery Center lease agreement. So, that being the case, I would ask the city council to allow this fee to be tabled until a review of the restructuring of the agreements can occur between the city, the Wildlife Discovery Center, and the Elloa Farm Foundation. And we anticipate this to occur during the first quarter of calendar 2018. The 2018 budget proposes personnel changes, including a new permanent position and a part-time position. An additional intern has been included, but that position's impact in the budget is anticipated to be de minimis. In looking ahead, I wanted to fill you in on some work that's currently going on behind the scenes, but that will be coming your way in the future. As you may recall, during the budget discussion last year, the commission discussed challenges that the foundation has been facing over the past couple of years in operating the facility. The success of both the foundation and the Wildlife Discovery Center has put some limitations on both from an operational and also a programmatic standpoint. This past year, the commission established a committee, which was led by former alderman George Pendelione, to facilitate a discussion regarding the current space capacity and facility utilization among these entities, and for evaluation of a long-term sustainable framework for future space allocation. After an independent study, the ad hoc committee, the Elloa Farm Commission, and the Park and Rec Board were presented with several concepts. The concept approved by each entity that was, was that Wildlife Discovery Center separate into its own building or space in order for both organizations to have the ability to grow and thrive. We understand that identifying a solution would provide long-term relief commensurate with the resident and community expectations. It's a very complex issue, and that's going to require careful and transparent deliberation amongst the various stakeholders who have an interest in this property. The ad hoc committee's work will be considered as part of the Elloa Farm master plan review. And then, speaking of the master plan, the Elloa Farm master plan and special use permit was recently introduced during a public hearing at the zoning board of appeals, and that is still an active petition currently. Lastly, beginning in early 2018, the Elloa Farm operating agreement will be reviewed between the city and the foundation, with the hopes of both simplifying and clarifying roles and responsibilities as it relates to the maintenance and the management of this facility. Because over the past couple of years, we, the commission, and also the foundation, have gained greater insight and wisdom on how the use of this property has complicated the spirit and the interpretation of these agreements. So, going over these documents will be a good, important step for making sure that we're all moving in lockstep and being transparent going forward. This will conclude with my prepared remarks, and now I would like to open it up to any Q and A, and I have Joanne Miller, the executive director of the foundation. Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Forgive me, a little more detail on the ad hoc committee report. The process, you're working on the, you're working on the true end, and then what's the next step in terms of what's going to happen with that?
Well, right now, that, that process is up with the zoning board of appeals, and if Mike wants to add a little bit to that.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So, the, as Chairman Hollingsworth mentioned, the committee report itself has been completed. The last step with that was to report back to both the Park and Rec Board and the Elloa Farm Commission. So, that's been completed. We have presented that to the Community Development Department to provide information and data towards the master plan review process. So, that's how that's being utilized at this, at this time. We'd anticipate that some form of that will come back again once it gets through that process for city council review at a future date.
Okay. I wondered if it was something we were going to, we were going to see at some point.
Yeah, we anticipate it'll probably be similar to the master plan and attachment to or reference to thereof of the master plan document.
Other questions?
Can you possibly elaborate a little bit on the, the space for the Wildlife Discovery Center? Are they being relocated?
There's, there's nothing, there's certainly nothing concrete at this point. It was an exercise of creating an ad hoc committee and getting an outside consulting firm to go over some possible solutions to some of the concerns that were voiced by both the Wildlife Discovery Center and the foundation in terms of, you know, having different missions and growing in a limited space. So, we talked about one concept of literally moving the Wildlife Discovery Center's facility to a separate location on that spot. But again, if this does go through over time, it would go through a long, deliberate, transparent process.
And in the meantime, are you, are you proposing to raise fees for the rent, or as you said, you're taking that out of the budget?
There's, there's no fee increases for that aspect of it. The only fees, the only proposed fee increases that we talked about would be for the hay barn rental fee and some use fees.
Field trips.
Correct, correct. And, and we did approve that, but then, in looking at the documents, there were some discrepancies with what's currently allowed in the lease agreement.
I see. Thank you.
Standing back from the one-year forecast and looking longer term, any material changes in what's envisioned for Elloa? The garden is so wonderful and produces such a capacity of fresh foods, and the garden market is absolutely stunning and has seen very strong growth. What's the longer-term view?
The long-term, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I have, Joanne Miller might be in a better position to talk through this, but is to do, any, any type of growth would certainly be done in a, in a very measured and transparent manner. So, the, so the short answer to that is that there is no plans for wholesale changes whatsoever within that organization. So, anything would be long-term, very long-term.
In getting prepared for this evening's presentation, we've talked about having Elloa come back and do a spotlight presentation so we can focus on some of those issues and answer questions on the longer term, where they're going. So, we'll be scheduling that. I think Mike will be scheduling that.
Okay.
Jed, I'd like to hear the finance committee's, any comments?
No, we're quite happy with what's happening there and their ability to function with the financial strength that they've, they have, because there was a point in time, and you can see in some of the numbers, where it wasn't always the case, but they're doing a very nice job, and we're happy that they're, they've done the budget the way they have.
Okay. Thank you.
And towards that end, I guess I'd like the motion to approve the budget, but I'll leave that up to you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Let's see. With regard to this item, the Elloa Farm budget presentation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for a motion to approve, the city council approve or approve with modification or reject the Elloa Farm annual budget and plan pursuant to Section 10(c) of the Elloa Farm operating agreement executed in March 2014. If rejected, the Elloa Farm Foundation would be authorized to operate and occupy the property in accordance with the annual budget and plan last approved by the city council, subject to rate adjustments not exceeding the change in the Consumer Price Index. Do I have a motion?
I would move to approve the budget as presented.
I second.
A little clarification, is that with the, the two exceptions that Mr. Hollingsworth noted?
With the two fee increases, yes.
I still second.
Still second. Then I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Certainly. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six ye, zero nae. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You still have the floor, Mr. Morris?
Yes, the second community organization is Gorton Community Center, and Barrett Davies is here as chairman of the, the board of the center to present the budget.
Thanks, Jed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and everyone here this evening. I will, at some point here shortly, I'll try to be as quick as possible, turn this over to Dr. William Moskov, who's the head of our finance committee at Gorton. over to Dr. William Moskov, who's the head of our finance committee at Gorton, and I can assure you that he has led a very rigorous process in developing our budget yet again this year. I want to say thank you to the City Council, because we do have a really great and longstanding partnership now over the last six-plus years, since really the reorganization of Gorton, and that partnership is, is a, is a function of having a third of our board be appointed here by the City Council, and so we work really closely with the city. I would say that the, the, the progress that's been made over the last six years has just been remarkable, and I'm going to share just a few of the highlights from 2017, and then some of our aspirations for 2018, and then, and then Dr. William Moskov will come up and present the, the numbers. And so, quickly, I'll share the mission, and like I said, a few of our successes, a little bit about 2018 and where we're going, and then the budget. First, I just, this is really important, and Gorton, and we think it's, it really does hit home for a lot of the folks who come through our doors, that Gorton is the, is the gathering place and the heart of our community, and it has really become that over the last several years, where people connect and converse and learn and listen and play and perform, and we're here to educate and to entertain and inspire. And, you know, one needn't only walk in on any given day of the week or drive by on an evening to see the lights on in a really full and active and vibrant community center with activities that are being participated in by children who are two-years-old, who've been dropped in at the drop-in center, the folks of all ages participating in programming. And we really do truly pride ourselves on being able to provide connectivity to everybody, every constituent, every stakeholder in this community, and we think that, that mission really says what we're about. You know, there's a lot up there on the slide to read. I'll just say that, you know, we, there are a couple of key points that, that we always focus on as we run the organization. You know, we, we had some challenges a number of years back, and we've worked really hard to make this organization sustainable for the long-term, and the endowment yet again grew this year, both with long-term pledges as well as revenues coming from our programming and our, our appeals to the community. We've had great support. We've continued to expand our programming. As I mentioned, our drop-in learning center continued to increase in terms of hours and families participating, which is a great sign that it's providing a needed service in the community. And we have really focused in 2017 on starting to spread the word, and you'll see more of that in 2018. I still, we still do run into folks in the community here who, you know, may not have as much of a grasp on all of the benefits that are at the Gorton Community Center to be taken advantage of, and we're going to make sure that that, you know, continues to increase in the years to come. And we really, really, and I think a lot of folks may not know this, and we're really proud ourselves on being a locus of nonprofit activity here in Lake County. The entire top floor and now part of the lower level of the building are filled with a number of organizations that are doing great work in the community, and they've all kind of come together and congregated at the Gorton Community Center. It's, it's a special place in that regard. The writing here is a little small, because there's so much. So much, right? But, but trust me, it's all great. But I'll just highlight, you know, that what we have on the slide here are a number of, of programs from 2017, and I think the key theme is, you'll see our partnerships, partnerships with open lands, partnership with Ragdale, partnership with Lake Forest College, partnership with the high school. Our, our new executive director in the last year, Amy Wagliardo, has worked really hard with the community to try to connect Gorton to the other institutions that, that really have a positive impact on our lives, and she's done a fantastic job. And so, you'll continue to see, you know, more of that as we go forward into 2018. And then, as we think about 2018, you know, it's a little bit of the same. You know, it's, it's expanding that programming with new and creative partnerships with folks from the city, more with the Siskel Center, more films coming from Cartum Kwan. There's a number of different organizations that are coming from outside of the community and bringing new and exciting programming. The, I would say, and I've, and I've touched on this, but I can't stress it enough, you know, 2017 allowed us to build a new website, implement a new CRM system, begin a coordinated marketing program with some marketing automation, and you're going to see a lot more of that in 2018 as well, so that folks really are targeted for the programming that we know that they are interested in. So, it's, it's, it's a great time at Gorton, and I don't want to steal Dr. William Moskov's thunder here, so I'll, I'll invite him to come on up, and he can talk specifically about the numbers, because they're good, and it's a pleasure to be able to talk about them and present them here, so.
Okay. Thank you, Barrett, and I'm pleased to talk to the council tonight and report on the enviable financial position of the Gorton Community Center. First, Gorton has a $3.3 million endowment, which speaks to the broad support it has in the community and of the resurrection of the organization that all of you are aware Second, Gorton is making money. Gorton is operating with a positive net income in 2017. For 2018, Gorton is forecasting a net income of about $126,000, even more than the roughly, than the, the income, net income we have, about $125,000 for this year. Among other things, Gorton is fully subscribed in the very popular drop-in center, and we frankly could have more people if we had a bigger space. And all of our second-floor facilities are rented out to a wide variety of organizations, and we expect a substantial amount of donations by the end of the year. Because this is my rookie year as Finance Chair of the Gorton Board, I took great pains to be sure that this was a responsible budget, and I must tell you that I've been with, on the board for about five months, and I am extraordinarily impressed by the commitment of energy and intellect of all the people on the board. This is a very responsible and sensible board, and we have now reached a position, it seems to me, when you look back on where the organization has come from, that there's a new normal. There is every reason to believe that the positive net income for next year and, and this year is not an aberration. There is nothing wild going on in Gorton. We are just, the organization is working to find programs that will appeal to the community. There are no expenditures made that are injudicious. We try to find sponsors for programs, and I think that now we're, Gorton is at a stage where it feels comfortable in its own skin financially, and we're going to start thinking strategically over the long-term and what, what will happen over the next several years. So, we're in a very great position. We spent a lot of time going over this budget. There was a, a finance committee meeting, which constitutes a very large proportion of the board. That sailed through. We went to the full board in October, and the board, the budget was presented there, and people had a month to chew on the budget, and last Monday, the board, the entire board passed the budget without dissent. It's a very good time in the organization, and after the, you know, the fall to the bottom, this has been an extraordinary rise, and there's every reason to believe, under the guidance of Amy Wagliardo and a very fine staff, that this is going to continue for a number of years.
So, I hope you have questions from the council?
I, I do have a couple of questions. Bill, glad to see you here, and this is a disclaimer, finance is not my first language. But you gave, so you gave us a lot of information, but if somebody said to me, what is Gorton's general budget? I actually couldn't find a number here that said you're a fill-in-the-blank agency, so, I mean, I got, I got program pieces, and I wasn't quite sure where that was in the document, but what would be your answer to that?
Lisa, what's the total budget?
About $1.2 million.
That's okay. $1.2 million.
Okay. So, I, can you tell me where that number was? I just didn't see it.
It's in our package.
So, it's in the front package? It's not in the...
It's in the detail package that accompanies the agenda.
It's not in this slide pack. It, there's a detailed budget that went to the, to the council.
Okay, so it's in the, okay, okay. And, and is that endowment number, was that in that same, in that same section?
No, that's from a report of the, the treasurer's, the treasurer of the organization.
So, that wasn't one, that wasn't one that we were, that we were sent ahead? It's great news. I'm, this is by no means intended as a criticism.
I don't believe you had that number, but this comes from the treasurer's report.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm always thrilled to hear a, a, a positive number. It's, it's wonderful, and I do applaud.
And there's an expectation that we will add several hundred thousand dollars to the endowment before the end of the year.
From, from donations, from...
Yes, and we're able to turn back the interest on that endowment, back into the endowment.
Great. Good, good. Terrific.
Remarkable, considering the, well, startup years ago of Gorton, the adolescence that all such organizations go through, and to where you are now, all of which, to me, amounts to what I call the Lake Forest miracles, the many Lake Forest miracles of Gorton, Elloa, Ragdale, these wonderful cultural and civic institutions that have been public-private organizations, where the city had the land or had the ability to step in and control the land, and then citizens, volunteer citizens, came together to make that community element work. Very few places in America can point to this kind of ongoing record. I mean, it seems like at any point in time, we're thinking about one of these. So, congratulations. That's really remarkable, all of you.
Certainly not my doing. A lot of people came before me.
I know, I know.
May I submit for a motion, Mayor?
With that, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this particular matter regarding Gorton? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve this, approval or approval with modifications or rejection of the Gorton Community Center Annual Budget and Plan pursuant to Section 10(c)(3) of the restated agreement relating to the Gorton property executed in July 2013. If rejected, the center would be authorized to operate and occupy the property in accordance with the annual budget and plan last approved by the City Council, subject to rate adjustments not exceeding the change in the Consumer Price Index, is the remotion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a second. Will the clerk...
We have to record.
To approve without modification.
Oh, as presented, yes, in this particular case.
Approve the Gorton Community Center Annual Budget and Plan.
Okay, as presented.
Second.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Certainly. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six ye, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Prue, I think you had a comment you wanted to make.
I, I do, actually. So, I am helping out with the fundraising for the Deer Path Golf Course, which, as you know, is the city's latest public-private partnership, at least I hope you know. And we've got some incredibly exciting news. For those of you who are struggling with a, with a, your Christmas list, and I know officially in Lake Forest, Christmas doesn't begin until Friday, but I'm going to just jump the gun a little bit and let you know that we have an opportunity that we have not specifically had before, and you, if you see up here, you may give a gift to the, to the campaign to renovate the golf course, which, as you know, is already underway, and it's going to be, it uses funds from both the city and the public. You can give a gift in honor of someone. You will be thanked. It's a tax-deductible gift, and we will send notification to the recipient that you have made that gift. You can do it all, you know, from your computer with your, in your pajamas, and, and we'll take care of it. So, this is something we have not done before. You'll start seeing some notifications of this around town on, in various city offices and so on, but we want to be sure that you do know this is something you can do. It's a great way to solve a problem on your gift, on your gift list, and particularly for those of you who are related to people who have, who love the Deer Path Golf Course, which is a, which is a, has a pretty extraordinary fan club. This would be a really wonderful year, and it would be very helpful to us to get to, as part of the campaign. So, just wanted to let you know, I think probably the best way, Sally, Sally, Sally's here someplace. Where is Sally? Would be to go to the, to go to the Parks and Rec, I think, Bob, the Parks and Rec website, and, and that will lead you to the Deer Path Golf Course, and it shows you all the plans, too. You can get very excited about the whole project while you're, while you're there. But I really urge you to think about this. I think it's, it's going to be fun to, to see how this works out. Thanks, Rob.
Well, thank you. Next is the consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule and ordinance adopting new fees related to the Community Development Department. This is a first reading to be introduced by the city's Finance Director, Elizabeth Hollab.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. We have a few items on the agenda this evening relating to the FY18 budget. I want to thank you for the time you spent with us last Monday evening in a finance committee meeting, talking about several of these items in detail. But I would just, for the public that may be watching or are in attendance, the city's budget process actually begins with revenues. So, we go through a process of estimating revenues, having a tax levy discussion, and then departments build their budget within the resources available. So, that is somewhat unique to Lake Forest, but has proven to be a very effective strategy here for a number of years. So, as noted by the mayor, the first item on the agenda is an ordinance approving a fee schedule as well as an ordinance adopting new fees related to development activity. We ask the operating departments each year to review their sections of the comprehensive fee schedule and to propose adjustments based on either cost recovery or comparable statistics with other communities. So, you have quite a lot of detail in your packet related to this. The, the fee schedule is about 18 pages long, but in that document, we have tried to highlight for you the specific changes. So, the fee schedule actually has some lines highlighted in green, yellow, and orange. The fees that are highlighted in green are only fees that have been inserted from the city code, so they were fees that appeared in the code, and departments are pulling those over to the comprehensive fee schedule, and for those, there's no change proposed for FY18. You also have fees highlighted in yellow. Those are existing fees that are proposed for an increase in the next year, and then you also have supplemental material from each department supporting their recommendations on those changes. And those fees that are in orange are a new fee that is proposed, which requires a supplemental ordinance. So, you have one of those, an ordinance with three new fees proposed by community development related to development activity. The schedule below that on this slide just summarizes all of those changes and provides for you an estimated revenue impact of those changes for FY18. So, for example, in community development, there are various fees that are proposed for adjustment. Those fees are deposited into the General Operating Fund of the city, and the projected annual impact is $4,180. In City Manager's Office, there are some proposed adjustments to special event fees, also in the General Fund with an estimated impact of just over $1,000 a year. In Police and Fire, the Public Safety Pension Fee is deposited to the General Fund, but it's a direct pass-through to the Police and Fire Pension Funds. That is proposed for adjustment, and we're going to have a detailed discussion on that with a few additional slides. That would generate $290,000 in additional annual revenue. The next are Parks and Recreation Fees, in Golf Course, Boat and Beach Fees, as well as Fitness Center Fees. The Golf Fees go directly to the Golf Fund. The Boat, Beach, and Fitness Center Fees go into the Parks and Recreation Operating Fund, with annual impacts of $24,000 in Golf, $4,270... Fund with annual impacts of $24,000 in Golf, $4,275 in Boat and Beach, and $9,835 in Fitness Center Fees. And then the last is in the Water Utility Fund with adjustments to water consumption fees deposited to the Water Operating Fund with an estimated impact of just over $165,000 per year. And we also have a detailed slide on that. So moving to the Public Safety Pension Costs, the city has had a significant discussion related to Police and Fire Pension Funds and funding of those state-mandated costs for a couple of years. In the last year though, that discussion has increased in earnest because this is the, this for example, is only the Police Pension Fund. You would see a similar chart in the Fire Pension Fund. But what it starts out as in fiscal year 2005, what that annual funding requirement was and how that, that has increased over time. So you can see in the current budget, FY18 budget, that is $2.1 million. So we've seen significant increases in both Police and Fire Pension Funding Costs. The increases averaged eight to nine percent. And so this is the trajectory of that increase and continued growth in those costs that the city was contemplating last year. And what I've included here is just some major items related to the April 30, 2016 actuarial valuation. So last year, this projected funding requirement was based on 100% funding by 2040 and a payroll growth assumption of five and a half percent. And a payroll growth will assume that you're going to try to keep your contributions at an equal level of percentage of pay. And so that payroll growth includes a five and a half percent increase per year, plus any natural increases in higher years of service or any statutory changes in benefits. So the city conducted two workshops in June and September to really take a deep dive into this topic. And the independent actuary from Foster and Foster was here to make some recommendations for the Finance Committee and City Council to consider. And based on those workshops, for the 4/30/17 actuarial evaluation, the city kept the 100% funding by 2040, but reduced the payroll growth from five and a half to two percent in an effort to flatten that curve and continued increases in costs per year. So what you see in the red line is what those changes and assumptions do for cost projections going forward. However, it does require a significant increase in funding the first year because it is an effort to start, start addressing those costs on a, on a higher active basis. So it's like paying off your mortgage in an accelerated fashion. You increase the principal amount per year. So what you see on this graph is the city would have had an increase in contributions under the old formula from 2.1 to, I think that's 2.368 or 2.68. So almost 2.3. But using this change, it increases it to 2.5 million for FY19, but projects the growth in that, those costs to be more modest going forward. So last week at the Finance Committee meeting, the city staff and elected officials talked about how to fund that increase in both Police and Fire Pension Funding Costs. And the recommendation was that the Public Safety Pension Fee was a new fee in the current fiscal year and it was adopted at $10 per quarter for residential water accounts and $35 per quarter for all others. That's commercial, multifamily, and school accounts. It was proposed that that fee be doubled for FY19, so go from $10 per quarter to $20 per quarter for residential accounts and go from $35 per quarter to $70 per quarter for the other accounts. This would increase annual revenue by 290,000. That revenue again comes into the General Fund and then is immediately transferred on a monthly basis to the Police and Fire Pension Funds and helps to offset the increased property tax levy requirement for that. And so in the proposed levy that we're going to talk about later this evening, that property tax levy in Fire and Police Pension would be reduced by the same 290,000. The next fee relates to water rates and this is the actual recommendation for the different categories. The city currently has a tiered rate structure for residential accounts that has a, a scale of rates for the first 10,000 gallons per quarter and then a different rate for 10,000 to 60,000 per quarter and then a different rate for any residential usage over 60,000 gallons in a quarter. So it is recommended that the city make these adjustments to those rates for FY19 and then all other users are assessed the same rate for all of their consumption-based usage and that has a commensurate proposed increase. The Water Utility Fund is totally self-supporting. It receives no general revenues from taxes or the property tax levy. And so this projected two and a half percent increase in operating revenue would support the operating expense increases in the Water Utility Fund. So the staff recommendation is to grant first reading to both the ordinance approving a fee schedule for fiscal year 2019, as well as the ordinance adopting new fees related to development activity. And I would just note, as I will with the next two items, that due to the modified City Council schedule, final approval is actually scheduled for December 18 rather than December 4. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is certainly the product of many months of serious discussion on the part of the Finance Committee and the rest of the council to bend down that funding curve, if you will, for pensions. And rather heroically, I think we've been able to do it with some very smart and skillful financial analysis on the part of staff, as well as some council members. And I think is easily the best long-term solution the city can have. That cost curve is faced by every municipality in the state and there are many, many communities that literally will not be able to come up with the absolute numbers of dollars very soon in the coming years to meet those obligations. Whereas in Lake Forest, we are very strong financially. We've had very prudent fiscal management over the years. We have reserves. We have a lot of talent in this town and we're using it here, building on the strong record in the background. So any comments from council?
Question, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question about the Public Safety Pension Fee on the water bill. Raising the amount in that bubble to get the curve to flatten, look, look longer term. Do we have the chance then to eradicate that incremental fee in two to three years? Or do you envision potentially financial conditions, market conditions on the investment portfolio perhaps being insufficient to sustain the investment income to satisfy that actuarial funding need? What do you think about the future?
Sure. The city continues to use 7% as an actuarial assumption. So those, both the projections from prior year and this year are all based on being able to generate a 7% return on average over time, which of course, from year to year may not, may not hold. But I would note that the mayor has created a pension subcommittee and those of us that are on that pension subcommittee continue to talk about options regarding the future of pension funding. And I would just note that one thing the pension subcommittee is talking about is moving away from a fixed funding by a deadline and instead using an open amortization period. And so that will require further study, but I think is a very attractive, long-term solution for pension funding in the city and perhaps the entire state. It doesn't currently comply with statutory requirements imposed by the state, but provided your funding amount under your 15-year open amortization is still higher than the 100% by 2040, you can continue because that is simply a requirement for annual funding determination. So I think that can be worked around. And I think that that's another possibility for continuing to bend this curve even further down.
When you say open amortization, is it appropriate for me to think of a 15-year rolling cycle? So one year comes off and another year goes on?
Right. And so under an, an open amortization, you're not looking to a particular deadline to be 100% funded. You're simply using a 15-year rolling. And so any investment returns or investment losses are simply amortized over a new 15-year period. You never reach full funding, but arguably under pension funding, 100% funding is no specific requirement. And under a 15-year, the projection long-term is that you can maintain about an 80% funded ratio.
So you wouldn't envision a day when the Public Safety Pension Funds would actually pay the residents back?
Unlikely.
Okay, yeah. Had to ask.
Be nice.
Thank you.
Doesn't happen in businesses either. Get your pensions paid back. Well, thank you. This is a great deal of work. When we went into this process, we rather adopted the broad goals of smoothing the impact, flattening out that curve rather than that steep climb handed to us by Springfield. And if for no other reason than for intergenerational equity on the whole matter, not just shoving it further into the future, but pay-as-you-go by the generations. So with all that, any more comments from council? Anyone in the audience would like to speak to this issue? Please.
Yes.
Could I ask you to come to the podium, please?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Give your name, name and address and so the folks at home can hear you. That's on television.
I have a question. You might be able to answer. Am I correct that the Police and Fire Personnel do contribute to their pension fund on a monthly, annual basis?
Yes, they do.
Okay. That's all.
Yeah. Thank you.
Both Police and Fire Personnel contribute over 9% of their pay towards the fund.
So I, I don't know if you answered the other part of Alderman Moreno's question, which was can, can we foresee a time in the future when perhaps this fee might not be needed on the water bill?
I would venture a guess, probably not. I mean, it is going to be a, it is going to be a required contribution going forward. Whether or not there'd ever be a shift away from the fee and back to the tax levy would be possible, right now we're funding the contribution through a, through both sources, primarily tax levy, but additional with the Public Safety Pension Fee. I don't, I mean, I think our funding is unlikely to go down unless there's major pension reform in Springfield.
Even with an open amortization, you don't see that?
Right. The early indications through the pension subcommittee meetings with the actuary is that the open amortization, so right now we're using 2040. So we're about 23, 22 years. So reducing to a 15-year would be hard immediately because that would increase the contribution requirement. What we've talked about is phasing it in and continuing along the current path until we get to 2025 and then making that 15-year amortization change at that time. So that phases in the funding requirement, but then it pretty much plateaus and stays the same, but doesn't go down.
So from another perspective, the city councils in the future always have the ability. No, no council can bind a future council. You know, they can decide what they want to do in terms of the particular blend about how to find, fund this as the facts and circumstances change. What's the policy of an open amortization and some of the steps to initiate all that is really the policy change we're making. Policy can change, obviously, as facts and circumstances change. Any other comments from the audience on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to grant first reading to the proposed ordinances with respect to fees.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
And continuing on budget and revenue matters, the next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance establishing the 2017 tax levy, the first reading, also to be presented by Elizabeth Hollup.
Thank you, Mayor Lansing. This received considerable discussion at last week's Finance Committee meeting, but for a brief overview, this first slide shows current projections for equalized assessed valuation by Lake County. We get early numbers from them on which to base our tax levy projections. A couple items to note is that they're currently projecting a 5.21% increase in the total city assessed valuation over last year, which is certainly good news to see continued rebounding of valuations of property in the city. And then the second number here is important of 16.6 million is new construction growth. So that's the current estimated valuation of new construction coming onto the tax rolls for the first time. And that generates additional property tax revenue because it is a property that has not previously been assessed and levied. The next slide shows in significant detail the, the line items that feed into the city's tax levy. And the, the tax cap, while the city is a home rule city, the city does endeavor to stay consistent with the property tax cap that non-home rule communities are bound to in the collar counties. The tax cap percentage related to this year's levy is 2.1%. So in this schedule, you will see that most of the operating line items are showing a 2.1% increase with a few minor changes. The significant difference is in the Police and Fire Pension Fund levy line items and that is due to the increase that we just talked about required to bend that curve and, and shift to the 2% payroll growth and avoid consistent eight to nine percent increases each year. So you can see what that levy requirement is this year, even with the increase in the Public Safety Pension Fee accounted for. So these levy line items here were reduced in total by 290,000 because of the, the fee And then what you see down here is the total overall grand total tax levy is proposed to increase 4.43%. But again, most of that being based on the increases to Fire and Police Pension Funding. This simply rolls that up and includes the new construction. So the new construction on the 16.6 million dollars in property is shared between the General Operating Fund Levy and the Library Operating Levy. So the library's tax levy is included in the city's tax levy ordinance. So you see the change in the General Fund and the Library Fund going above 2.1% because of the impact of the new construction. And then attachment four is the projected impact on an average home. The median home value in the city is just over 800,000. So we use an $800,000 home to project the impact, projected impact on a resident. And that proposed levy would be $123 over the prior year and is 3.76% on that average home. Obviously, that will fluctuate depending on the individual assessed valuation of a particular property. And I would just note that the city and the library combined to represent about 22% of the tax bill. So that $123 would be on 22 to 23% of the total tax bill. So there are other taxing districts levying property in Lake Forest and so we're keeping an eye on the tax levies as they propose those to know what the overall impact might This chart just shows the use of property tax levy revenue by category. So nearly half of the levy goes into the General Operating Fund to fund Police, Fire Operations, Public Works, Administrative Departments of the city. And that budget is about 70% personnel. So... So that is being funded by about half of the tax levy. 17% or 5.4 million is pension-related, so that will go towards funding the police pension, the fire pension, as well as Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, which is the pension for non-public safety employees. 16% to the parks and recreation, about 800,000 or 3% to capital improvements. Four, just over 4 million or 13% of the tax levy goes to fund the operations of the library, and 1.5 million for debt service. And this is debt that is being funded from the property tax levy. So we'll talk in a minute about debt that is paid from alternative revenue sources. So the city council is asked to consider granting first reading to the ordinance establishing the 2017 tax levy.
So moved? Any questions, comments from council?
Question. Elizabeth, can you go back, please, to the pie chart, one slide? So when you look at this, and having worked in Lake Forest Finance for as many years as you have, what trends have you seen? The general operating share of the total levy has gone down. It's nearly 50%, but it used to be over 50%. Clearly, the pension fees going up. Would you speak to the trends broadly as you've seen?
Absolutely. Now, Lake Forest is somewhat unique because in many Illinois communities, the Park District is a separate taxing entity. So that park and recreation portion of the pie would be assessed as a separate taxing district. Because they are part of the city government, the levy is included in the city levy. But certainly, over time, the pie that is going to the pension has increased significantly. And that has generally tended to erode the general operating fund. And so the general fund is less reliant on property taxes and looks to alternative revenue sources to continue to fund the operations of the city.
Mayor, I just want to comment. Last week, the finance department implemented a new feature on our website where you can go out and now see all of our expenditures in a form of graphs and charts and other kinds of things. And maybe before you stop, you can be pointing everybody to where that is. But I encourage everybody to go out and look at there. Our taxes are approximately 20% of your overall tax bill that you get, given all the other entities in the county that are adding on to that, but it's about 20%. But I encourage you to go out and look at the Open Gov application that the directors put out there.
Right. If you go to the city's website and you go to the finance department, it's really the easiest way to find it. And then look to the tab on the left that's called transparency. And then there's different kinds of financial transparency reports. There is, interestingly, a chart on there that's 10 years of the levy shown by portion of where it's gone. And so I think that would be very illustrative of your point, Alderman Moreno.
I would just make one comment about the overall levy on the very famous median home values. About $800,000, maybe a little more. The city portion of that is approximately $2,700, maybe a little more, which, just as a comparative, that's equivalent to seven months of that home, perhaps spending $400 a month on lawn service. And as I like to reflect, here at the city, we offer more than a shave and a haircut when it comes to all the city services that we provide. So the value is quite considerable, ranging from public safety through the streets, sanitation, et cetera, et cetera. So, which highlights tremendous, I think, effectiveness in the relationship between staff and many councils back over the years in effectiveness in running the city. When I was on council, what, 15 years or so ago, we had 253 full-time employees. Today, that number is 213, which is a reflection of a whole bunch of things: outsourcing, different plans, different objectives, so forth. So any more comments for council? If not, any comments from the audience with respect to the tax levy ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to grant first reading to the ordinance establishing the 2017 tax levy.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
68, zero, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next and last item in the budget parade is approval of ordinances abating the 2017 tax levies for various general obligation alternate revenue bond issues. This is the first reading by our finance director, Elizabeth Holla.
Thank you. So on the previous slide related to the property tax levy, you saw a debt service section that totaled 1.5 million dollars. This chart shows how that number is derived at. The city has historically issued all of its debt as general obligation. With the full faith and credit backing those bonds, the city can achieve the lowest interest rate and save the taxpayers the most amount of money by doing that. Some communities issue revenue bonds, but those are typically sold at a higher interest rate. So this has been a very good strategy for the city. However, as general obligation bonds, a bond ordinance is filed with Lake County with each bond issuance, and that sets forth the funding requirement related to the debt service. So this table shows the levy per county for all the currently outstanding bond issues for the city. So as you can see, the city actually has debt service for FY 2019 of 4.7 million dollars. This chart shows by bond issue and by source of funding where alternative revenue sources are being used to pay the debt service related to the improvements financed by the bond proceeds. So what we do is present to the city council each year abatement ordinances which reduce the amount that the county would levy automatically for debt service. So you have five abatement ordinances for consideration, and all of those are reducing the levies for the amounts that are going to be funded from non-property tax levy sources. And that will net to the 1.5 million on the previous table. So there are five levy abatement ordinances for consideration of first reading this evening.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, any comments from the audience with respect to the abatement ordinances? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to grant first reading of the approval of ordinances abating the 2017 tax levies for various general obligation alternate revenue bond issues.
So moved. Seconded.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
68, zero, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Alderman Bushman, I believe you had a comment you wanted to make with respect to comments by council members.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And recognizing we have a full agenda, I'll try and be somewhat brief. But after talking to the mayor, the desire is to have the council address two recent developments in connection with the so-called proposed EA for the West Line Railroad tracks. By way of background, it was about a year ago that there was a draft environmental assessment issued proposing expansion of the capacity on the West Rail Line that runs through our city on the west side. And the proposal included various infrastructures that included a third rail section, actually here in our community of Lake Forest. And it was for the stated purpose of increasing Amtrak's Hiawatha service between Chicago and Milwaukee from seven round trips a day to 10. Public comments were sought as part of the draft EA process, and there were numerous comments submitted. Without going into detail on all the comments, I think clearly, and at least in my mind, the most notable comment raised was that the draft EA did not address what negative freight impact may result from a third rail expansion. This concern has generated a growing grassroots effort to stop the proposed third rail holding track for freight trains. And I know a group has been formed called ACTION. It stands for Alliance to Control Train Impact in Our Neighborhoods. But the two recent developments that I would like to ask input from the council on, one is a letter that our local congressman sent out to WISDOT and IDOT providing further comments on their proposed infrastructure improvements or advancements. And the second is a letter that WISDOT and IDOT issued indicating an update on their review process. Many citizens I know have seen these letters, but they have been added to the city's website to view them at your leisure. Starting with the project update letter from the EA project team, they did indicate they're doing additional analysis to further quantify the potential impact from the Amtrak service increase. The troubling thing in their letter, and many have commented on it, is they failed to talk about the need to focus on impact from freight operations. Actually, in their letter, they never mentioned freight train impact. And it's curious, and I'll lead you to the second piece of recent correspondence, the correspondence from our local congressman. And Bob, I don't know if you have a copy that you can put up on the screen. And this is a letter that the two congressmen, our congressman locally, Brad Schneider, and another fellow congressman, Jan Shikowski, wrote to IDOT and WISDOT. And just looking at the first paragraph, they say, "We are writing to request that IDOT and WISDOT conduct a freight impact study before moving forward with any proposals to increase Amtrak service on the Chicago-Milwaukee-Hiawatha line." They go on to mention concerns about the effect of the holding track in their communities, and including, they specifically mentioned, Lake Forest. Their concern about the widespread impact this expansion would have on the surrounding communities. And what they say is they believe it is important for IDOT and WISDOT to complete a freight impact statement. And, you know, I personally think that's a very good idea, and I'm suggesting, and I'd ask, you know, council's comments on this, that the city send a letter to the congressman expressing appreciation and support for their suggestion that a freight impact study be conducted before this project proceeds, and provide a copy to WISDOT and IDOT. I think, you know, if we have our congressman reaching out, acting out of concern for our citizens, I think it's good protocol for the city to express support and appreciation to their effort. Also, I think it's a way of communicating with our citizens, particularly those who are active in this area, to express that, you know, we do see a problem here and that we really do not want to see a negative impact to our citizens from additional freight train traffic, freight idling in a third rail situation, or the additional congestion and safety concerns that may result from it. So with that, I ask my council members, fellow Aldermen, if they have any thoughts or different thinking on the suggestion that the city sends such a letter of support to our congressman with copies to IDOT and WISDOT.
Ray, I've got a question. Thank you for presenting that, for bringing this up, and it's great to be updated. Let me just ask, I'm looking at the dates of the Shikowski and Schneider letters, October 13th. And then we have a copy. Is it all right to reference this thing we have from Greg Klaus, who's the deputy district director?
Oh, this is something I just saw today, or tonight, I guess.
So, okay.
I just saw that on my desk.
Is it appropriate for me to, okay, so the content, so this is something from Brad Schneider's deputy district director. He's here in the Lincolnshire office. And he has a paragraph that says, "As you probably are already aware, it sounds like the full EIS will not be granted." But I'm not clear what happened between October 13th, when this request went out, and then October 19th, when he wrote this saying, "As you probably know," I don't, is there, can somebody fill me in on that?
Well...
And then the November, but does the November 7th letter from WISDOT and IDOT, it doesn't say there's not going to be an EIS, does it? Or did I just not read that correctly?
The, let me defer a second on EIS.
Okay.
But the congressman in their letter, and the one I referred to, had earlier in their comments to the EA indicated they were recommending a full impact EIS.
Right, and that they do on this letter of the 13th?
Yeah, I, in my prior life as an attorney, I did have some experience with environmental impact statements. And knowing how they were characterizing this as an impact coming from operating three more Amtrak round-trip trains, the odds of justifying an EIS, I've always thought were very slim. But again, I could be wrong. No problem people proposing it. But to me, I've always felt the focus should be on, what is the impact? What do we know about it? And that may tell us, you know, if we get good answers, you know, are there going to be more opportunities for freight trains? Would, you know, increase greater capacity for them, particularly coming through Lake Forest here? How they deal with the various impacts it does have, whether it's noise, vibration, safety, congestion, et cetera. Then we get to the point of looking, yeah, maybe it is a major impact, and maybe it should justify EIS. But at this stage, and I agree with, you know, the comments, again, I just read it tonight, that I'm not surprised they're saying that the full EIS may not be forthcoming. But it doesn't say that they still have to do an environmental assessment, and that's the EA.
Yes.
It's a lower, you know, category, but they have to look at what the impact is. And I come back to my question, you know, are they going to be looking at seriously and totally the question, what is freight impact? What are we looking at here? And that's what I'm, I support our congressman in asking for this freight impact study. And I hope the council would too.
Didn't we already do this? When we filed, we filed our, either our objections or our comments or our whatever. My recollection was in April. And then we followed up with a follow-up comment saying, "We also want, we also want the FRA or whoever is responsible for doing this assessment to also consider the impact of freight as a result of the Hiawatha, the Amtrak-Hiawatha proposal."
Well, I think...
You penned it!
Well, I think you're referring to originally in November, and it was November 7th, 2016, that the council did adopt a resolution based upon the Hanson Engineering Report, and did submit that as our comments to the EA. But that goes back to November 7th. And, you know, it did not, in those comments, ask for a freight impact study. It raised questions about many unknowns. And it was maybe more focused on the engineering side rather than environmental impact side. But you are correct, there was a later piece of correspondence. I think it went out over Mr. Kiley's signature to WISDOT and IDOT after we were made aware of the US EPA in the November timeframe, who did get involved in the draft EA process. And there, they were fairly specific... And there, they were fairly specific, saying, "In these 10 infrastructure improvements, many of which include third rails, you are not answering the question, what does it mean from an environmental, from a freight train standpoint?" And this is something that should be answered, and I can give you quotes from the US EPA's letter in November. And again, we, we did, you know, have correspondence with the WISDOT and IDOT, supporting the US EPA's comments. But I think now we have an opportunity with our congressman going on record at this stage, it is past the EA stage, but, you know, they're going on record saying that we should have a freight impact study. I think much is served by us supporting our congressman, and supporting our citizens by saying, "That is a good idea."
So Ray, if I understand correctly, what you're proposing is that we re-up our, our interest to, on the back of the, of the congressman, but perhaps also on the Department of the Navy, Navy Corps of Engineers letters suggesting that there's impact to aquatic, potential impact to aquatic bodies?
You're raising a broader question now, and I was going to try and be more focused of just talking about the freight impact study. What Alderman Moreno is referring to, we also were made aware of a US Army Corps of Engineers report, and I know the citizens had have made us aware that they actually saw the investigators on site and did talk to them, so not surprised to see their report, not surprised to see them expressing concerns about environmental impact. But, you know, I think that's another day, another discussion, and rather, you know, than complicate this. It is a very complicated issue, and I know the citizens have other issues to address. And again, I, I thank the mayor for allowing me the opportunity to bring it forth amongst all this great financials information, but I think it's important, and, and again, it's something simple, I think, to ask that the city go on record with the letter to our congressman, again, expressing appreciation, support, and make sure it's known publicly so that our citizens understand that, and also WISDOT and IDOT in the process.
You know, I wasn't even aware that there is such a thing as a freight impact study, so when I.
Well, it's not, and that's what we're asking for.
No, I know that it hasn't been done, but is this a different creature than the EIS or the EA? I mean, maybe.
I don't think it's defined. Is it fair to say? It's, it's three words. I, I don't, you know, and kind of web research on EA's and railroads and things, I've never come across it, so I.
In defining what it is, and who does it, and. It's interesting, our congressman used initial caps on it, so they felt it's a defined term.
Right.
But the way I interpreted it is consistent with the intent of an EA, namely, to look at what the impact is, and, and I'll go back to my earlier statement.
You would think so, yeah.
That the update letter that we received from the EA project managers did not, in there, mention the word freight at all. And, you know, whether it was intentional oversight, or felt it wasn't necessary, I don't know, but I don't want that oversight to be something that gets lost sight of when the final EA does come forth. I think the citizens are entitled to have a report come forward that truly explains what this expansion on the West Line means in terms of the freight operation, and if it really does mean that they have greater opportunity to run more freights, idle more freights here in our city, we should know that, and we should understand the impact, and be able to deal with that impact, and hopefully negate that impact.
Maybe our city attorney, do you, are you familiar with a separate report called a freight impact study, or what's your understanding of that?
I believe that is a home-cooked term, intended to get an assessment of what is the opportunity for additional freight along those lines, but I, I've not found any statutory or regulatory link to that.
Well, isn't that the essence of what everyone's concerns are, is the impact that these additional freight trains are going to have on our communities? So, to me, it's fundamental to what we've been concerned about as residents of this community, is the impact that these additional freight trains running through our community are going to have on our community and on our environment. I found this letter from the Army Corps of Engineers to be very concerning in terms of the impact that it would have on some very sensitive natural areas, too. So I think we bang the drum as loud as we can to get a freight study, and that would be my suggestion.
May I say something?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to get this off my chest, and I'm going to keep my trap shut. It seems to me that we don't need to spend three hours here tonight discussing that. I think the letter, an email from an alderman, perhaps Alderman Bush, to Bob, recommending that we do that, and his, he so often does, frame the letter himself, run it by council, and get it out. What are we, what are we here for?
I would support that approach.
What?
I would absolutely support that approach.
This is, this is crazy.
Yep.
Jack, I would support that approach, too. I think the only thing, the only place I might differ, and it sounds, I mean, obviously I can't speak for everybody who hasn't spoken yet, but I don't see any downside to this. I think, I think endorsing, essentially what you're asking us to do is endorsing the Schneider and Chakowsky request for, I'm happy to go with the caps, I mean, maybe we'll, you know, start having freight. But I am wondering, to, to Melanie's point, I, I'm wondering if we should actually include, go a little bit deeper and note some of the areas of concern that we have. So whether it would be emissions from idling trains, you know, that we might bullet five or six things that are currently on our minds as an area of worry, which combined together have caused us to feel that an impact of the, of the additional freights, the likely additional freight, would be desirable. I wouldn't get into detail, I wouldn't, you know, quote sources at this point, but it seems to me that we have an awareness of the areas of concern. We could certainly highlight a couple of the things that the Army Corps mentioned without getting specific. So in other words, what that does to me, so just building on what you said, Jack, write the letter, make it basically endorsing the other letter, but add those kind of teeing up future concerns that might come up again, because I could see from their perspective, you know, are we going to write a letter on every issue? Let's, let's lay it out now. I mean, we could, but I'm not sure that's strategic. Let's lay it out now, and just say, "This is why we're worried," and list a couple of the points.
Right, especially since we don't know what a freight impact study entails, we would want to be certain that they address our, our areas of concern, so I think that's a great suggestion.
Mr. Mayor? If I might interject, I've been going back to Alderman Reisenberg's point that he made, and Susan, if I could ask you to pull up the city's website, that the unfortunate aspect is the November 7th letter was, I think, geared more towards the timeline than the freight study or what is being done. Because if you go back to an August 7th letter, which is on our website, and everybody could see, the WISDOT, Susan, go down just, no, go up a little. I brought your, keep going. There you go. I brought your attention to this, which is on our website, that goes into much more detail, and I'll go ahead and I'll read it here, because apparently, a lot of people haven't read it, even though it's on our website, is, and this is based on letters that were penned by the city council, and Alderman, Bushman, and so forth, in our, in response to what you're talking about here, our concerns about what wasn't being said in here. And so they are, in effect, going forward with more quantitative data collection on impacts of noise and vibrations. And they say, and I quote, "The noise and vibration analysis is being updated using more detailed information on proposed Amtrak-Hayawatha service operations and potential changes to freight and metra operations as a result of implementing the program. The project team obtained current freight volumes and operating patterns, which will allow for more accurate identification of the noise and vibration levels and locations where noise and vibration exist. Next, the change in level and location of noise and vibration due to the increase in Hayawatha service and potential changes to freight and metra operations can be identified. In addition, a noise wall analysis will be conducted to determine if there are locations where these walls could be added to mitigate potential increases in noise and vibration." And I guess I read that because even though it wasn't spelled out as clearly in the November 7th letter, that is what they've been working on ever since the public comment period concluded. And that was at our request, and requests of Glenview and Northbrook, and so on and so forth. And that work is going to be completed here in 30 days. And so while I'm all in favor of sending a letter to Congressman Schneider, thanking him for his help, and I'd be more than happy to work with Alderman Bushman on putting that letter together, what I'm concerned about is, since the freight traffic study is so generic and so amorphous, that I'm afraid WISDOT and IDOT are going to come back and say, "We're already doing that. Have a nice day." And so I'm not sure, unless somebody wants to be more specific about what isn't on our website from WISDOT in terms of the work that's under, being undertaken, and give us more specificity that we can come back to them, then we can ask them, "No, in addition to that, we want you to do this." Now, we're in the 11th hour, and so they can say, "Thanks, but no." And so I guess that's my only concern with penning a letter. I'm, as I said, all in favor of sending a letter to Congressman Schneider, thanking him for his help and his assistance, and I think we should definitely do that. I'm just not sure what more specificity we give beyond what's already on the website and what work is already being done.
Well, this looks like it's mostly noise and vibration that they're focused on, and I think there are a number of other issues, such as pollution, the, pardon me?
Contamination.
Contamination, the, all of the areas that were raised in the Army Corps of Engineers study that I don't see them addressing. And, and my other question, while I have the floor a little bit, is, and maybe Vic knows the answer to this, but doesn't the Army Corps have to sign off on this at some point, or what's their authority in this process?
Well, while he's answering that, let me go back to the EA, and Ray can, or Alderman Bushman can articulate, since he's much more familiar with EA's, the whole process that they've been undertaking over the last nine months is to respond to all those questions that were raised by the various agencies. So while you don't see it necessarily in their letter, they are working on it, and they are required by federal law to address the questions that have come forward from the US EPA, from the Army Corps of Engineers, and any other issues that were raised. That process is underway. That, the reason that, you might recall, they were going to have, hopefully, the EA completed and submitted to the FRA already, but because of this additional study that they're doing on freight impacts, that delayed, and that's what they sent out the update at our request, as to what that process is. And so I think, while the city attorney can respond to it, under federal law, they have to respond to the questions that the Army Corps and the US EPA and all the other agencies submitted.
Respond, though, is something different than addressing the concerns. You know, it seems to me that when the Army Corps gets involved with a project, and they tell you you're not meeting our requirements in certain areas, then you have to go back and either mitigate that, or do something to specifically address their concerns, not just talk about it.
Yeah, no, and, and that's what would happen, is keep in mind, and again, I'm, I don't want to step on Alderman Bushman's expertise in this area, but this is just the first stage. This is sort of conceptual design, if you will. They haven't even started drawing. So if issues are raised by the Army Corps, any of those, and they say you have to mitigate it, and what you might see in a Fonzie or any other report issued by the FRA, is there's going to be a lot of conditions, not unlike what the city council does with petitions, you put all these conditions on there. And so any construction, design documents would have to incorporate those conditions as a part of their development plan.
Bob, forgive me, I, I don't know who that letter is to or from, and I'm sorry that I.
Which one?
The one that you just read from. It doesn't.
That is, we were asked, I was asked to reach out to WISDOT officials.
Okay.
Back in August of this year, because when we asked them, you know, what, when the EA is going to be available and released, they wanted to know, they said, "Well, we're doing additional testing." And so my question to them was, "Can you be more specific about what additional testing?" So it was a response from WISDOT officials to me, in what is this additional testing?
So that came just to Lake Forest, or that came to everybody, all the communities involved, or?
It came to Lake Forest, and I shared it with the other communities.
Okay, all right. So the place we would have seen that, would it was on the website? Okay.
That is correct. After we received it, we put it on the website, so it's been on there since August.
Okay, and, and these other letters are also there on the website, or?
The Schneider letter is now on, and.
And the Army Corps?
The Army Corps.
About the Army Corps?
Well, the Army Corps.
The Army Corps is not, and I think it's a question certainly the council can talk about tonight, too, is, is, I think I mentioned to Alderman Rumel, is, as part of the EA process, there were hundreds of letters that were submitted, and comments that were submitted as, under the public comment period. We did not put them on our website. And we have gotten a few recently that we've been asked to put on there, and I guess the question becomes, to what extent do we put these on, or don't put these on, because we don't have Lake Forest Open Lands letter on, we don't have Lake County Forest Preserve District on, and there's a lot of other ones that we could put on. I guess the question becomes, the two options that we have is, we could file a Freedom of Information with WISDOT and get all the correspondence that they received, and post that on, on our website. Or the other option is, is now that there is this group formed, and if the city council would be amenable to this, is they have all the various documents, because they FOIA'd them from WISDOT, and we could just do a link from our website to their website, and they could put any and all on that they want. Now, the only caveat I put that with the city council is, historically, we only allow 501(c)(3)'s, because as you might imagine, there's a lot of groups that would like to have links to our website. And so I would want to make sure that the city council specifically takes an action to direct the staff to include this unique situation, so that we don't get a lot of requests down the road from a lot of other people who would love to have a presence on our website.
Well, instead of linking, can't, you could just include all of those letters, right? I mean, we have capacity on our server, I would imagine.
Why don't we just call our, why don't we just call this, or change our website to Facebook? I mean, this is, this is ridiculous.
Can I suggest we come back to, I guess I was trying to make it a productive session here, and make some progress, I think, from the standpoint of, at least from the citizens, where we are. And, you know, I appreciate all the comments you made, and I know from all the comments, including the US EPA's comments, that they cannot ignore freight impact, but how much they pay attention to it, how much they answer those questions, none of us know that. And by the way, I don't profess to have all the expertise you attribute to me. But remember what I said, the two reasons I felt that the council should support and go on record to support us responding with a letter of appreciation and support to our congressman is because I think it is one good protocol, and Bob, I think you are agreeing to that. But the second reason that we seem to be ignoring is the citizens feel they've been somewhat starved from input from the council. Now, you know, Alderman Reisenberg can point out that, yeah, we did do something back in November, and I think it was March, the other piece of correspondence, but a lot has happened since then. A lot has happened that continues to give them concern as to what the position is of the council on this matter. And I think this small step of the council saying, "Yes, let's send out a letter of appreciation and support for a freight impact study," not argue over what the heck it means, not argue over whether we should also include the Army Corps of Engineers into it, at least we take that step. And, and these other issues, you know, we can spend the rest of the night, you know, dealing with, they are difficult issues, and I'm happy to do that, but the mayor was kind enough to say, "Yeah, I'll, I'll let you, I'll recognize you," and I've taken.
You always have that, right.
Last time you're going to do it, mayor, right?
Yeah. Well, I would make a motion, then, that we send a letter of support for a freight impact study as discussed in the letter from Congressman Schneider and Congressman Chakowsky.
If I may note, we don't have this on the council's agenda for action. The council can certainly express their consensus.
Thank you.
And that could be the impetus for having Mr. Kiley present a letter for you all to, for you all to review, but we can't have a formal motion.
All right, well.
I agree with Vic, it asks, do we have a consensus to send this sort of letter? And, you know. And, you know, is there, I don't know how you take the vote on it, but-
Just a nod?
Sure, sounds fine.
Anyone want to object?
Could we move on?
I take it as a yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Jack, I think moving on is fine. I do feel that Bob has proposed something that I'm not, I think it might be something that we should vote on, that the idea of doing something we don't normally do, which is, which is linking to the website of this newly formed group. I'm not sure, I'd like to actually think about that because it would be a precedent setting, you know, it seems like a good way to manage something-
Why don't we just get their website reference?
There, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. There are some concerns about interlinking of our website with others.
Yeah, no.
And maybe what we can do is for your next meeting, have some kind of information about that so that-
Okay.
We can understand both the risks and benefits of doing so.
I mean, it would be helpful to have all those letters available someplace. I mean, I know I, you know, I've printed stuff out and then I've flagged stuff and, you know, I have, but I don't have it in a particularly orderly way. I know often when we're voting on something, which I, you know, we're not obviously at this moment, we get an assembled pile of comments, but I think this has been going on for long enough and there are enough of those. I don't know if that's feasible, but it would be great to be able to go and see in one place what's been said over a period of time. So if we can figure out how to do that, I think that would be helpful. And why don't we do it and talk about it at the next meeting?
I would make the suggestion that to not talk about a capitalized term, freight impact study, because I don't think it exists and they'll use that as an excuse not to perhaps do something, but a short declarative sentence that talks about the impacts of freight traffic in whatever form, up or down or whatever, arising from a third track. That way, for inclusion in the EA, because I guess my assumption from the beginning is, I, it's just, it's not intellectually logical that you could have an EA on expansion of trackage without discussing what happens from things that roll on those tracks, so. So, and I've really seen nothing that would deter me from thinking that it will be included in the EA, but there's nothing wrong with reinforcing-
I can't speak for the congressmen and I can't, you know, I don't know why they wanted to capitalize those terms and what they had in mind. But again, the concept, and that's what I'm dealing with, is the concept of having freight impact study, whether you're initial caps or not, doesn't change it, having a freight impact study before they go forward with the projects they're proposing in the expansion of that rail line. And, you know, I think as long as we're telling them, "We appreciate and support what they're saying," initially, putting initial caps there isn't going to change it one iota. So, you know, let them have the benefit of feeling that this is a term of art to them. And they play a much bigger role than we do. We all recognize that. They're part of funding these sort of projects and they control the federal funds and, you know, this project, they're looking for $150 million of federal funds and there may be reasons to spend that money other ways and for expanding that line. And they have a role to play. So again, I would give due deference to them and how they want to characterize it. If we don't have a problem with the way they characterize it, use their terminology as a freight impact study.
Consensus delivered.
I was going to raise a second topic, and that's in the November 7th letter from the project managers. Found this very interesting that they indicate that they hope to finish their further analysis and reconstruction, planning and that, hopefully by the end of this year and early 2018, reach out to agencies, municipal leaders and state legislators to communicate the results of their impact analyses, and hopefully it does include freight impact, with comments being solicited from the meeting participants before finalizing the EA. Alderman Moreno and I suggested that Alderman from the 3rd and 4th Ward, whose constituents obviously have been the most vocal about this matter, attend the meeting. And Bob, you raised some concern on that being an option, and I know you reached out to the EA people and I know they said they were under the impression that would be the same people they met in the past, but again, you know, my encouragement is that if we can expand it to include the Aldermen that have the constituents that are the most impacted, I think that would be the most meaningful way of proceeding. I don't know if any other council member has a comment on that.
But what's the form of this meeting? I mean, just sort of a basic thing. This is a letter of invitation to, what, city managers really, wasn't it? To attend, what, is a briefing, an update or something?
Yeah, one year ago or about 13 months ago, I guess it was, before the release of the draft EA, representatives of WISDOT and IDOT reached out to the municipal managers of the five communities and said that, "We'd like to brief you on the draft EA that will be presented here in the next 30 days publicly and answer any questions that you might have." So when I read this November 7th, 2017 meeting, and it was then confirmed in a follow-up email, is that was sort of their intent. I think they, when they talk about local or leaders here, municipal leaders, that they were also hoping to kill two birds with one stone and they would probably invite Congressman Schneider's staff and Congressman Chakowsky's staff and maybe Julie Morrison and Scott Dury, I don't know, just to say, "Here is the final EA that is going to be submitted to the FRA. You have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, but if it's anything like the meeting a year ago, this isn't as much a dialogue as it is a monologue in terms of just giving us a heads up as to here's what you can expect."
So it's not a hearing? I mean, it's not, they're not anticipating a two month-
Yeah, it's not my party, and so I appreciate the request. I guess the two questions I really have is, I can pose the request to them, but because there's five communities, then each of the communities would have to be provided the same opportunity, number one. And number two is that if they say no, then I guess my question is, should I still attend? Are you telling me that you don't want me to attend or, because, you know, that's, that's one of the questions. Again, this isn't my party that I'm throwing and so I can either go or not go, but I can't dictate the terms of who's going to be there. We can certainly pose that request to them, but the request may be denied. Because they did make it perfectly clear, this is not a public meeting. They're not opening it up in the public process again, and so it's not going to be here in the council chambers and anybody can attend kind of a situation.
Yeah, the one statement or sentence in their, their letter that certainly I focused in on, which maybe differentiates it from the earlier meeting, they do say, "Comments will be solicited from the meeting participants and incorporated into the final EA and SDP." So, and since the final SDP is something that's going to come out after this meeting, after they solicit the comments, again, this is a, to me, an important meeting to give us as a city an opportunity to express our views and to try and influence the process as best we can. And again, I know, you know, us from the 4th Ward are happy to volunteer, to participate, feeling we can contribute to the process, but I recognize it's not our party and proceed accordingly.
I mean, I feel the same way. I mean, I'd love to go there. I really would, but, I mean, there's a certain pecking order, quite frankly. You know, there's a certain process and whatever, and would it hurt my feelings if I don't get invited? No, because I didn't, you know, I don't think they, I don't think they want, they don't want, no disrespect to us and my role, I don't think they want to go down to my level, quite frankly. I mean, this is kind of, and it will eventually, it will get to us. We will, I'll say the same thing that I will say had I been there, although quite frankly, with all, with that cast of characters, I don't know what kind of impact I would have or Ray would have or Michelle would have anyhow. So, I mean, it would be, it would be good because then we can hear it firsthand. If not, I guess we would get it secondhand, but I don't think anything would be lost, hopefully in the translation, and we would have the same ability to push back as we ordinarily would. So I don't, I don't know.
Well, and I think, Alderman, that it was-
I'm not going to throw a fiddle, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, and when I first saw this, I actually thought that, much like we did with the draft EA, is when the document is officially public, as they indicate in here, the public will be able to review the final EA and submit comments to the project team, that I would anticipate that we might engage Hanson again to review the EA, to submit recommendations to us, that we could then file a formal resolution one way or another again, once we actually have seen the document, and we have some technical expertise that can weigh in on what does this mean or don't mean.
I mean, I certainly think you guys need to be there.
I think it might be useful, though, because it does say what Ray read, "Comments will be solicited from meeting participants," that we arm you with a letter that we would like you to submit, because that then gives us a chance to put it in writing.
But I guess that's working off the assumption we've seen a draft before we go to this meeting. And maybe what I should do is ask them to articulate and clarify what they mean by submit public comments.
They don't say, they don't say public comments in this letter, it's the comments from the participants at the meeting, and that's what we're referring to.
Right.
But-
I mean, what you, what you said, Bob, is consistent with the consensus of council some months ago that we, until the EA is done, it's hard to comment on what the issues are that are identified and so forth, and who knows what this is all going to amount to. Maybe, you know, two-thirds of all the things we're concerned about, they're, they're very concerned about it. You know, it's really going to hurt the prospects of a third rail. So it's, it's hard to get all mounted up and be specific and work within their process. This is the great American railroad industrial complex and all the hundred years of rules, regulations and laws surrounding all this, and it's just, you know, you've got to pick your spots and try to, you know, bend them to the way we would do it is not necessarily productive. So we've certainly gotten a lot of input and I think there's some, I know there's folks here that want to speak to us tonight so we can be armed with all these thoughts in going to that, that meeting. But we're going to have to really wait for the product to be released before we really know what's going on.
If I could just add one comment there in going ahead to the final EA, I think there we do need to have a discussion how and what resources we want to have and, because I would raise the question whether Hanson Engineering is the right resource we want to make further comments. And again, I don't want to debate that now or discuss it now, it's just a question I'd like to leave, you know, at the, at the table at this time.
Right. Well, yeah, I think once this release comes back to council, that, that's our decision point, that decision about what to do.
Right.
And if we don't agree with it, to come out and say we oppose whatever they've perhaps decided or agree with it, and frankly, become political if we so choose to do that, because the next chapter, if they decide to move forward in some fashion, is funding, and that is by far, in my view, the biggest single hurdle of this thing. It's tens of millions of dollars for what, a parking lot? When in fact, Metro and Amtrak and the railroad, the freight railroad have enormous number of operating choices and alternatives to allow an increase of trains, better metro service into Chicago and, and the Amtrak Hiawatha by working something out with, with the freight side of the, of the usage of those tracks. And so I think the, there's, I have no presumption at all that it's a requirement there be a third track and for enhanced passenger service, both Metro and Amtrak Hiawatha. It's been asked for, but it's really, it faces an enormous funding hurdle, and therefore I think the passenger thing ultimately has a very good chance of proceeding without a third track. But that's, I'm getting into the zone of my own opinions on this. So, any other comments from council? Alderman Bushman's thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome, sir. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. And I see we've got about a dozen requests to speak and more coming, more coming. And the first person, let's say, just in no order, the way they're handed to me, Dennis Millamans?
Millamans.
Millamans, okay. 1100, Sir William Lane in Lake Forest to talk about safety. If I, as I think you've all seen in sort of the procedures of council, I would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and given the number of speakers and respect to everyone's time, that if something's already been said, let us not be redundant in repeating things. And again, please, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the council and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody slaughters my name.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to speak about the safety considerations and our group is organized, so we're going to talk about the topic. So maybe this is one of the topics that goes in that letter. Everything about the third rail is for freight trains and it's dangerous to the communities that would be impacted. Idling trains spewing carcinogenic diesel fuel fumes is a public safety issue that cannot be ignored. It will affect all of Lake Forest. We have a westerly wind. If a train is sitting there idling for 30 minutes and I know they're there for 30 minutes minimum, the whole city's going to smell it. And think about what a Lake Forest High School football game or soccer games would mean to the health of our children. The proposed rail is to be near those locations and certainly would have an impact on that. The second point is noise from the proposed increased speed of the freight trains from 40 to 50 miles an hour would create even greater noise and currently exist and according to numerous studies can cause physical and mental problems such as sleep disturbance, cardiovascular disorders, and I can personally tell you, I get woken up in the, in the night as freight trains go through. A study of the effect of passing trains on school-aged children show that children exposed to noise were nearly a year behind in reading compared to the noise in a quiet classroom. What impact would that have on our Everett School, which is literally about 100 feet from that West Side train? Let me take off my glasses. A shared track with slower freight trains and faster commuter trains and passenger trains has been proven to be the most dangerous combination in rail safety. This corridor would be the highest risk for the most disastrous derailments and collisions. I'm particularly concerned about a switch that takes two tracks to three tracks or three tracks to two tracks. What happens if that switch is open when it should be closed and we have a head-on collision? That's a big concern on my part. Lake Forest already endured one derailment this year and it was on a straight part of tracks, no switches involved, and it was only through sheer luck that it didn't happen on the metro-sponsored rail. That's my three minute, I think. Chicago is vulnerable to train accidents. In the Western Hemisphere's busiest freight hub, the city has become a center for crude oil traffic. We all know the disasters that can happen with crude oil trains. In the Chicago Magazine, there were 17 derailments of crude oil trains in North America significant enough to generate news coverage. In eight of them, the tank cars blew up, sending fireballs hundreds of feet into the air, filling the skies with black mushroom clouds. In these cases, a minimum one mile wide evacuation- cases, a minimum one mile wide evacuation area was required. Now that covers almost all of Conway Farms.
Can I ask you, do you have other safety topics? I mean, you've mentioned crude oil. You're on crude oil now. Is there another?
Nope, that's the last one.
Okay, okay. Just want to-
I just want to say, safety is the biggest concern that I think we all have to see with respect to this proposed project, and I thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to express my concerns.
Thank you very much. Next, Tom McIntosh, 105 South Canterbury Court.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. The main reason I'm here, I'm representing our homeowners group of 84 townhomes in Stonebridge HOA at Conway Farms. And my biggest concern, he went into great detail, but I'll just express that my wife wakes up at night from these freights that we're getting now, and we saw the same thing going on when we lived out west in Long Grove, going to the CN hearings, the stuff that they can do with these freights, how big the freights can be, how dangerous the freights can be. So I'm here really just to say that we'd be better off not to have a third rail, because I think the third rail would adversely affect our quality of life and our property values in the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Catherine Galloway, 525 Greenville.
Hello. Thank you for also giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of the Meadowwood neighborhood, near Waukegan and Deer Path, and I can tell you that the freight noise and the train noise is already an issue for us. I live near Waukegan, and I can absolutely hear every train that goes by, and it does wake us up at night. And I thought it was interesting what the first man said. Sorry, I don't know why I get the shaky voice, I'm not a public speaker.
Take your time.
Thank you. I thought it was fascinating, though, what he said about school-aged children, because I can tell you for certain, there are two children in my neighborhood that have nightmares due to the trains and are behind in school, in their reading. It is absolutely a fact. The other thing about our neighborhood is, you know, we've heard about these houses in Lake Forest that sit on the market for a long time. We have been fortunate to actually have good turnover in our neighborhood. It's a wonderful place to live, and a lot of young families have recently moved in. And you can tell, these are people that are here to make their home for the long term. I'm sure if any of them knew about this when they were buying their homes, they might have thought differently. And I can tell you that if the third rail goes through, as much as I love it here, I don't know if I can stay. It is that much of a fear and a concern for my family's quality of life, my young children, and all these young children in my neighborhood, and the, you know, sleep disturbances, what we're all saying, the air, and these highly, highly volatile combustible crude oil trains. I mean, it's fact, it's not drama, it's fact, and they're coming through our town. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I really appreciate it. I hope you all take it into deep consideration.
Next is Nancy Cooley, 1751 Stanford Court.
Thank you, Alderman and Mayor. I've talked to some of you before about this particular topic. Tonight, my particular topic will be the environment, and you did spend some time on that earlier. Thank you, Mr. Bushman, for sticking up for that end of the bargain. I live very close to the Middle Fork Savannah, so the Middle Fork is on my mind all the time. I'm a member of Open Lands, and I spend a fair amount of time over there. So just in case anybody missed this, I'm going to go through a couple of things. The proposed third rail construction would bisect the Middle Fork Savannah and threaten a sensitive ecosystem. I think some of you know that, I'm not sure everyone knows that. Lake Forest Open Lands and the Lake County Forest Preserve District have expressed serious reservations about the environmental assessment, and those have not been addressed, and I think you mentioned that earlier. I, for one, think those letters should be posted on our website for the city. The Middle Fork Savannah features a mix of oak savanna and woodlands, wet and mesiac prairies, sedge meadows and marshes, and sensitive wetlands. Middle Fork provides valuable protection for many state and federally listed species. A 25-acre parcel here is considered the highest-quality tall grass savanna of its kind in the nation, and recognized as a globally threatened ecosystem. It's a big deal, and I know, Alderman, Rommel, you're concerned about this area. Because of its size, Middle Fork supports an impressive list of uncommon birds, butterflies, and other species that require large areas for survival. Middle Fork also serves as a national ecological research and outdoor classroom for universities, schools, other organizations, including senior education. This pristine ecological system would be threatened, if not totally destroyed, by construction of a three-mile-long side track, the third rail, and the following years of vibration and pollution. I was glad that we were talking about pollution, because the pollution would go from the tracks east. It would fall into the Middle Fork Savannah, and Elawa Farm, and then on east. The border of this property is also compromised by the Bay Area's expansion and excessive forest removal. Done deal. Don't think someone else is going to save the Middle Fork. It's got to be you guys. You've got to stand up for it. You can't lay down and just stay silent. Please.
Thank you very much. Very thoughtful and detailed comments there. Next, Michael Manus, 1680 Yale Court.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you, and, you know, I think over the year, there has been some up and down with these issues, and I'm really getting the idea tonight that we are all on board, for various reasons, to oppose this third rail in particular, and it really is incumbent on you, as this body, to represent the citizens of Lake Forest, to do everything that you can and represent us in making sure that this third rail is derailed. It's not good for us, that's a no-brainer. I want to talk to you specifically for a minute about noise and vibration impacts from the construction and the added capacity. Creating a three-mile-long side track to hold freight trains would add an unreasonable increase in noise and vibration to levels that already exceed actionable nuisance. Freight trains passing on the Metro tracks are longer and more frequent now than ever before, and construction of a holding track for freight trains would only increase the noise and vibration, not only from freight traffic, but from construction of the proposed three-mile-long side track. Exposure to the increased levels of environmental noise and vibration from the train traffic and the construction can cause all kinds of health problems that have been covered by others, hearing impairment, hypertension, annoyance, sleep disturbance, and more. Those risks are real. Some people live 50 feet, that's 50 feet from where the tracks are now, with increased capacity and this third proposed rail. Visitors and business patrons will also suffer the consequences of increased noise and vibration. The environmental assessment ignored or downplayed the impact of increased noise and vibration during construction and from the additional rail traffic if the project were to be completed. Because of citizens' objections, the Federal Railway Administration decided to reevaluate the effects of noise and vibration from additional freight and rail traffic. And while the evaluation has not been released, it only plans to address issues of noise and vibration post-construction, not the noise and the construction would bring for months or years. This is really, as I said, a no-brainer. We went through at the beginning of this meeting, some of the miracles and beauties of living in Lake Forest, our community center, Gorton, the school system we have here, the activities, and the beautiful life that we've all come here to enjoy. There is nothing good that I've heard about this third rail for Lake Forest, and I ask you to oppose every way that you can, the construction of this third rail. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Renee Satels, 544 Lexington Drive.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me speak. I also live in the neighborhood Meadowwood, and that is my main purpose of tonight, to put Meadowwood on the radar of your thinking. I've attended every meeting this last year, I've written letters, I've made phone calls, I even spoke on other meetings, but so far, every communication I hear from you, written or spoken, you only address the neighborhood academy, Kevin Court, and Pine Oaks. But Meadowwood has definitely a problem as well. The current state is, in my opinion, already unacceptable. We live half a mile from the train tracks, but what happened, it started in 2014, is my guess, before, it wasn't really that bad. We heard the trains, but since 2014, we can feel the trains in our house. When we sit in our living room, the chair is trembling. So guess what happens to our foundations? We worry about that. My neighbor, who lives right next door, he wakes up every night because of his bed shaking. That's how bad the trembling is. It happens with certain trains, not all of them. So I suspect it's the double-stacked trains, or the very long trains that have more than one locomotive. I'm not sure which one it is. We came to Lake Forest for the beautiful, open, green spaces, and when I think of the future of Lake Forest, that is what I envision. That is the place where I want to live. I want to see people, young and old, enjoy living here. I want them to enjoy worry-free, clean air, lush, green, organic fields, that they can swim in pristine waters, and that we have taken care of our future generations to come. They're all our children. It's not about us. So thank you for putting Meadowwood on the radar. I also think Middle Fork and Melody Farm are experiencing the same situation as we. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Meadowwood is now on the map. Frank Nimashine, 1111 Pine Oaks Circle.
Thank you for letting me address you today. Alderman Bushman, I would make one suggestion on Brad Schneider's letter. In the second paragraph, it said he requested an EIS from the FRA, which is the federal, which opens it up to a whole new ballgame of departments, and the environmental impact study to Wizardat and Idot. To me, that's the wolf guarding the hen house, because they're not going to come back with anything bad. With that, enough said on the letter. I'm here to talk about traffic congestion, and I live right on the corner of Conway Road and Waukegan. It's a small townhome community of 22 units, and I have watched, over the years, the traffic on Conway Road and Waukegan, and Everett Road and Waukegan, become extremely dangerous, not only to drivers, but also to pedestrians, even when the gates open. The environmental impact study, or the assessment, did not address the traffic impact that these additional trains would have, and especially these long freight trains. When they go through, it can back up traffic from the gates, all the way onto north and southbound Waukegan Road. Now, I can't see what the backup is on the other side of the tracks, because I live right at the corner, but the condition would only worsen if the Hiawatha project of the third rail and the crossover near Conway Road is allowed to continue. Construction would undoubtedly cause long delays, or possibly closures, of Conway and Everett, and probably as far south as Old Mill Road, because when these long trains go through, all three streets are closed. That would cause undue delay to our EMTs and our fire department personnel, who need to get to the east side of Waukegan Road, from the telegraph station. Finally, the last thing I want to say, and it may or may not happen, but the construction of an Amtrak stop at the telegraph station would cause undue delays, noise, and vibration issues, as you would get another 10, 20 stops a day at that station. It would also require that people getting on or off at the telegraph station would need additional transportation. That would mean taxis, buses, shuttles, already adding to the amount of traffic we have now. And eventually, there's, we've had a couple of serious accidents at the station already. This is just opening the door for a lot more. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Lots of good information there, thank you. Next is Joanne Desmond, 1681 Yale Court.
Hi, thank you. I'm not going to repeat everything that people have said. I am the Lake Forest spokesperson for the Action Group, and we are a group that is growing grassroots very, very quickly, working in coordination with Glenview and the other communities, trying to help educate people about what this means. And I want to thank Alderman Bushman for his efforts. I believe that this city council needs to stand with us and take a position that there is nothing good about a third rail in our community. It's not just a freight impact study that we're looking for. We want to say no third rail in Lake Forest. It is intended entirely to be a holding track, that's what the EA report said. It is a holding track for freight trains. Nothing good in our community will come of that. We need you to take that position, no third rail in Lake Forest, and please stand with your citizens who believe strongly that this would hurt our city very, very, very much in the future. The second point I'd like to ask is that we actually implore the city council to please allow Alderman Bushman to stay, to sit in the meeting, to offer comments to the dot agencies that will be presenting the revised draft of the EA. We believe that he has educated himself on these issues, and since the public is not invited to attend, we believe that they cannot prohibit an elected official who represents the constituents of that ward for participating. So we would like the city council to please endorse his participation. We believe it will be- We believe it will be allowed. We work very closely with Glenview, and we're going to find out what Glenview is doing. But I also want to tell you that it's very important that we have Alderman Bushman there to help represent the people of this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne. David Tanaka, 1142 Pine Oaks.
Good evening, and thank you. I had prepared remarks, but I've scrapped them in favor of something else, so I think other people are going to cover them. What I'd like to do today is thank the council for hearing us out and for being cooperative in getting to the bottom of the third rail. That is the point of everything that we've been trying to do all along. And to get the information we need from the EA, to get the information we need from the studies, was the entire goal of our process. And thank you very much, again, Alderman Bushman, for being such a dedicated and devoted Alderman in support of your constituents. I think that I speak for everybody here when I say that this meeting has gone a long way toward increasing transparency in the municipal government.
Well, thank you very much. Believe me, we may not speak very much, but we are on this case, believe me. And there's many more chapters to be written, but we're very focused on it. Thank you, sir. Next is Carol Dahl, 1660 Cornell Court.
Good evening. I'd like to echo Dave's comment. Thank you very much for hearing us and taking action. But I would like to talk about the whole necessity of this project. And as Jack said, why are we here? This just won't go away. And I keep thinking, why are we here? The expansion project, after how many months, still makes no sense to me. The assumptions behind it are flawed. The estimated cost of the project is $150 million. Look at how we started this meeting, looking how we're going to get more revenue. We're upping our taxes. This is going to cost somebody $150 million with no contribution from the beneficiaries. Who are those beneficiaries? Amtrak? Metro? Not us. Amtrak says it needs additional capacity. It does not. Amtrak justifies this project by the need to increase Milwaukee to Chicago passenger round trips by three trips per day. Amtrak's assumptions are faulty. I attended the meeting in Glenview, where they had all their poster boards and they presented all the proposals. The one that caught my eye was add more cars. We did research. The cars are not even at 40% capacity. I never got an answer why they couldn't add more cars. I still don't understand why they can't add more cars. Adding additional trains will increase demand for an Amtrak ticket. A daily round trip, this is new to me. You asked that we not share old information. This is new to me. I'm interested in money. It's all about the money. This whole project is all about the money. A daily round trip ticket from Milwaukee to Chicago costs $50. Do the math. Like Prue, math is not my first language. That's $250 a week. That's $1,000 per month. Gas is pretty cheap. It's going up, but it's cheaper to drive here. Who is going to take the train and spend $1,000 a month? I just don't get it. The same rationale would apply to building an Amtrak station in Lake Forest, as a commuter train is just too expensive and it's inconvenient. Metro wants freight trains to increase revenue over its tracks, but wants others to pay the consequences. As the owner of the tracks, Metro is the party that stands to benefit most from the project. You've been watching the news. Metro is in dire financial straits and is desperately seeking additional revenue. They've recently announced increases. Metro reported that it's running a $45 million budget deficit and that its capital budget will be at one-sixth of its current needs. In response to a Freedom of Information request, Metro furnished numerous contracts with other rail lines like Amtrak, CSX, and Canadian Pacific. These reimburse Metro for things like property taxes, labor costs, sales tax, payroll, excise tax, health, welfare, blah, blah, all this stuff, maintenance, and other costs of doing business, as well as additional fees based on two factors: number of cars, weight of the trains. We're going to feel that. On one contract alone, the freight fees run into the millions annually. More trains, more cars, and more weight means more money for Metro. In addition to increased Amtrak traffic, the project would increase the number of freight trains. Since Metro owns the tracks and charges a fee to use them, construction of the project would put millions of dollars in Metro's coffers from additional freight charges at absolutely no cost to Metro. The entire $150 million is ticketed to come from taxpayer funds. So what does all this mean? In other words, taxpayers and residents of Lake Forest pay the price. But what do we get out of it? You've heard all the consequences. But Metro reaps the benefits for something no one needs, and it will negatively impact Lake Forest. So again, I ask, why are we here? What is the necessity of this project? Thank you for doing what you can.
Thank you. Thank you. Very articulate. Next, Richard Jaworski, 1670 Cornell Court.
Thank you for the time to speak with you. Most of my comments have been covered or will be covered. But I'd like to go over a couple of items that I've noticed. I personally am a railroad aficionado. So for me, I not only see trains, I observe them. In the last six months, I have noticed that the oil trains have gone from half in the daylight and half at night to only one running in the daylight hours and the remainder of them running at night, trying to cover how much rail and oil traffic is going through our community. The other thing I noticed a couple days ago was prior beginning of the year, the engines on the oil trains were coupled next to the first oil car. Those engines are now separated by two freight cars. So the railroads must figure or believe there is a safety issue for the people in those trains or those engines if there is a problem. So just to let you know that these oil trains are a concern to the railroads who are operating them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Dan Seeball, 560 Ivy Court. Oh, this is the omnibus item.
Yeah. Do you want to weigh down that, or?
Well, maybe if he's changing topics. I believe there's one more individual in the back. Karen, did you want to speak?
Okay. Excuse me, Dan.
Sorry, Dan. Don't go anywhere.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for having me here. I'm Karen Davidman from Congressman Brad Schneider's office. I totally enjoyed listening to the conversation tonight. I actually had asked if I could come and speak to you about what the congressional office can do. So I just would like to change some of my remarks. Congressman Schneider supports a full environmental impact study, not the environmental assessment. I think you drew a distinction there. And he has asked for a full impact of freight trains, the full impact freight trains will have on residents and public safety specifically. So if you have additional concerns, and I've heard you mention some of them, please send them in whatever form to us, whether it is the environmental or traffic and noise. I wrote down some of them, vibration and the environmental things, because the office would like to have that. We are here to support the community, to support the residents, to support the village and the cities. I am the casework director, and I deal with problems residents are having with federal agencies. And that could be Social Security and Medicare. It could be veterans' benefits, if you're not getting benefits, if you've lost your service medals, if you need your DD 214, if you're not getting treated properly at the VA. We do a lot, we do post office in the IRS for missing payments and things like that. We start everything with a privacy release form, where we ask you to sign that you are authorizing us to speak on your behalf. And we do a lot of immigration. And with all the changes now with legal immigration and the legal routes of DACA and everything being suspended, we've had a lot of issues with that. But we are here. Our office is in Lincolnshire. We are here to serve you. We are here to help you. Please reach out. You can get a privacy release form on the website, www.schneiderhouse.gov. And we're certainly here to hear you regarding the train situation. So again, it was very informative for me to sit here and listen to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Any other questions, thoughts from the audience regarding the West Side Third Track Rail? Hearing none. Move to the next item on the agenda, which are items for omnibus vote consideration. Dan, let me just read these off, and then we'll get into it. There are seven items for tonight. The first is approval of the November 6, 2017, city council meeting minutes. Number two is award of contract for professional services on data migration to SharePoint Online. This is phase two of the Office 365 Plan.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a problem if the residents want to excuse themselves at this point?
No, you're welcome. It's not impolite. If you want to go home and have your cocktail.
No. Yeah, he's swayed.
Yeah, he will. We're getting there. Thank you, Karen. Number three, award of contracts for Wi-Fi and backhaul replacement and implementation. Number four, approval of a two-year contract extension with Lake Forest Bank and Trust for banking services. Number five, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of the final plat for a four-lot subdivision, the Saunders Estates, Lake Forest subdivision. Number six, a consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board. And seven, approval of health insurance contract renewals. As we've done before, any single item could be taken from the omnibus list and addressed separately, but any particular comments or thoughts on those seven items, which are fully in our packet? Michelle?
One quick question for Elizabeth, again. Wind Trust, sorry, Lake Forest Bank, they're so generous, and we've had a relationship with them for such a very long time. And I would ask you to comment on that. I think it's wonderful that they support the city the way they do and really prize that relationship. So any color? I just think it would be nice to recognize them.
Sure. You're absolutely right, Alderman Moreno. We have enjoyed a very, very good relationship with the bank for a number of years. And they're also great community partners, very supportive of all kinds of events in the community. And they really, really value having the city of Lake Forest as a customer. And so I think you see that in the proposal information that they submitted in 2014. So we went out competitively to look at banking services, just like we do any longstanding relationship that we have with a vendor here at the city. But you could see how competitive their fees were compared to others in the marketplace. And just from my experience, we enjoy, from a fee standpoint, a, I don't know of anyone with that kind of banking relationship from a municipal standpoint. So they've certainly been very committed to the city.
Well, please do thank them from us, because it's exceptional to see that kind of support.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Omnipresent, it seems, throughout the community.
I had a question. On the Saunders Road development, just a brief question, Kathy, about what's going on, sort of in that whole area, what do you foresee happening there? Because there's a lot of property also to the north. When I looked at the map, that looks relatively undeveloped. And so what is exactly to the north of that? Or it's very limited development on that parcel, if you go to it.
So the Saunders Road area is located south of Route 60. This is Route 60. And west of Conway Farms Drive, east of the tollway. So it's this area right in here. There are about 15 properties. Most of those properties are about five acres each. And probably about, I'm losing track, but I think 10 or 12 years ago, at the request of the property owners in that area, the city created a special service area and extended sanitary sewer and water to that area. And annexed that area. Previously, it was unincorporated. Those properties at that time were zoned R3, one-acre lots, with a special provision to allow clustering of lots, lots much like we do with conservation subdivisions. But in this case, it was really recognizing that there's a fair amount of wetlands in the area and that it would be reasonable to think that as those lots develop, the developers might want to increase the buffer along the tollway. So this property, which is located near the south end of that area, is the first to come in to subdivide. So it is, the proposed subdivision is consistent with the R3 zoning. You'll note in your, in the write-up that the only difference is that the lot-to-depth ratio doesn't exactly meet what's in the code. The Plan Commission felt that the deeper lots in that area really made sense to allow each of those property owners to have a deeper backyard to provide some buffering. So ultimately, the area is zoned residential and would be appropriate for future development.
So you see, these are one-acre, these are now zoned one acre, correct?
Correct.
And how many homes are we putting in that area total, or lots?
On this particular lot, four lots are proposed.
Right, of one acre in size.
There are about, as I recall, I think there's about 12 to 15 five-acre parcels in that area. There is some limitation with wetlands up against the tollway. So theoretically, on each of those five-acre lots, you could probably get somewhere between two to four lots. So ultimately, you can have reasonably, maybe 20, 25, lots in that area. We also have some, a couple lots in that area that do still have horses on them, left over from the county. So there also may be a desire to keep some of those lots as the larger five-acre parcels.
That goes to my question. I was just sort of wondering what was envisioned for that area, because it's always sort of been, you know, on our western edge, and I didn't know whether it was foreseen that it would be a cluster development. And you're saying that possibly some of those lots to the north would be prime for a cluster development, correct?
Yes. The council, at the time it was annexed and rezoned, specifically acknowledged that the challenges, because of its relationship to the tollway and the presence of wetlands, may make this appropriate for cluster development.
So we don't really see it ever becoming like a part of the Conway Farm development generally, with the smaller lots and townhomes and such in there, or?
It will never be part of Conway Farms, but there could be some smaller lots in that area.
All right. That answers my question. Thank you.
Dan, you had a comment on, I think, this topic, was it? Please, thank you. Dan Seeball, 560 Ivy Court.
Dan Seeball, 560 Ivy Court. So I'd like to request again that an item be removed from the omnibus and considered on its own merit, which is item 56, the Building Review Board Assessment of the Changes for Wesley Farmstead. And in particular, the item that I'm concerned about is the, what's called the monotony plan, which I don't think is in the material at all. And the last I had heard on that from the Building Review Board meeting is... And the last I had heard on that from the Building Review Board meeting is the monotony plan is, there's now four different styles of homes. And initially, people who purchase in the subdivision can pick any of those styles. But as the lots are filled, it becomes more restrictive on the styles that people can purchase. And that's the monotony plan. And I feel that falls outside the Building Review Board, that's more of a Plan Commission question. And the reason I think this is important is because the big question is, after all of this debate on the issue, why are they making what looks like a fairly significant change? Did they get input from neighbors who felt it was too monotonous, that they needed more variety? Did they do market research and determine the plan that they had was not sellable? What is the motivation for making this change?
I would defer to the Director of Community Development. Now, it is an unusual location with the tollway right there.
This is different.
I mean, forty.
Route 60.
It's 60 and 41.
Route 60.
I'm sorry. It's all right. Exactly.
Ridge Road, actually.
Got it, the Ridge Road.
Ridge.
Yep. What did I say? Tollway.
Yeah, the other one was tollway. The one before, the one before Saunders was tollway.
So, I believe Mr. Seeball's questions are about the Wesley Farm subdivision, correct?
Yes.
This subdivision, located at the southwest corner of Route 60 and Ridge Road, was a subdivision of the Riley property, a 40-acre property, was previously approved by the Plan, or by the, recommended by the Plan Commission, approved by the City Council. In fact, the infrastructure, if you've been by the site, is in place. What you have before you tonight is a recommendation from the Building Review Board, not on the subdivision, the subdivision's already been approved, but on the home designs for the northern 26 lots, for the smaller lots. You may recall that the southern portion of the property had some larger lots on which custom homes are going to be built. So, on these 26 lots, the Building Review Board did hear this matter, I believe, over the course of two meetings. There are three different floor plans, small, medium, and large essentially. And each of those floor plans can be selected in one of four architectural styles. Those styles were reviewed and refined as a result of the Building Review Board's decision or discussion. And each of those architectural styles are varied depending on the floor plan selected as the homes get larger. And in addition, each of the architectural styles offer various options as far as materials, for instance, bay windows, dormers, whether it's a front-facing garage, a side-facing garage. And as Mr. Seeball referenced, similar to what was put in place for Stonebridge and for Willow Lake, there, the Building Review Board did put in place an anti-monotony condition. So, homes of similar architectural styles need to be separated by two lots. There are, because of the configuration of the lots, there are limitations on which lots can have front-facing garages and side-facing garages. So, in addition to the various floor plans, the various architectural styles, the options, there's also that further limitation that's put on to assure some consistency in massing, but also some variety for those 26 homes.
Now, with respect to the question about whether the determination of appropriateness of all this was correctly divided between Plan Commission and Building Review Board, are you satisfied on that point?
There has been no change in direction. The concept as originally approved, these 26 lots on the north side, the smaller lots that will ring the preserved open space, were always intended to be a series of, a series of homes based on four different architectural styles. So, there hasn't been a change in direction. Building Review Board simply picked up where the Plan Commission and the City Council left off. The Plan Commission and your work established the density, established the overall site plan, the lot configuration, the location of the detention ponds. And the Building Review Board only got involved to look specifically at the design of the 26 homes, the massing, the appropriateness of the amount of variation, and the exterior materials.
Okay, well, which is their purview. Right. Any questions, right?
What was the vote by the BRB? Was there any dissension?
There was no dissension.
It was a unanimous decision to recommend this to the council?
It was a unanimous decision, and the Building Review Board also appointed two members to
oversee.
Work with this as they move into construction drawings, just to make sure that the details, as discussed by the Building Review Board, are achieved.
And the builder, I assume, had no problem with the recommendations of the BRB?
Correct.
This has always had great potential to combine with the development below it, which is the Open Lands development. Are there currently connecting paths through both of these developments?
Both of the developments, as approved, have proposals for connecting paths. Obviously, there'll need to be some further communication and cooperation as to how those paths are accessed, whether they're free and open, or whether they're gated. But yes, both, both plans were approved with the notion that there would be some provision for connecting paths through the open area and down into the Preserve at Wesley, which you recently approved.
But no, we don't have a plan for those yet. That's still sort of under discussion.
There are, in the landscape plans for both of the developments, pathways are shown. I believe that those will be refined as some clearing is done on the Preserve property and as the open space areas begin to take shape.
I mean, it doesn't, you said that there may be gates or limited access at some points?
There's been some discussion about whether there would be split-rail fences or some kind of, just to indicate where you're leaving one property and accessing another. This open space will be private property, and obviously, the open space on the Preserve at Wesley will belong to Open Lands.
Right, okay. But we're not going to exclude the public from this area, because that defeats the purpose of having connected open space.
The concept of connected pathways has been a consistent discussion, and both the developer and Open Lands have had that communication.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts on the omnibus agenda? Any, would any alderman like to remove any item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the omnibus agenda of seven items as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six ye, zero ne, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is ordinances. There are none. Proceeding to number seven, new business, from the archives. Robert Kiley has found a very interesting 1994 set of decision-making parameters adopted then by the council. And it's always interesting to see what our forefathers, our elders have come up with. So, Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor has indicated, this was a document that was originally developed in 1994 by the City Council as part of its strategic planning process to more or less formalize the decision-making parameters that it felt had been used historically by the City Council, and they thought that it was appropriate using going forward. I will say that this document has not been widely circulated outside of certainly the city staff over the last 20-plus years. I think occasionally, the City Council has seen this, either as part of a strategic plan or in some other capacity, but not on a formal basis and not on a regular basis. And so, in consultation with the mayor, we felt that it might be appropriate to bring it forward to the City Council, let the City Council chew on it, debate it, see if it wanted to change it, delete it, do anything to it. But going forward, if they felt that it was appropriate, that maybe on a more regular basis, like an annual basis, it's part of the first of the year, or May 1st, that we just adopt those to keep it in front of us going forward. If any of you have served on other boards and commissions, you probably know that sometimes board and commissions actually put it in their packet, and so, it's part of the regular agenda, if you will. I don't know if we need to go that far, but I think the, sort of the two-step process would be, one, do we want to do anything with these, modify them, update them, what have you? And then, two, if we do so, then how regularly do we want to revisit them and make them accessible, not only to elected officials, but maybe to the caucus, maybe to the residents, and so forth? So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has. I think I would just emphasize, you don't need to necessarily take action. This is sort of your first look at these, and if you want to maul them over, come back to them, whatever the case, we can certainly do that.
Why does it say City of Lake Forest Strategic Plan? Did this come out of a prior strategic planning?
It did, in 1994.
But we didn't review it again in our updates?
The most recent one, we did not review, no.
Yeah, it's, it's, was I in council in 1994? I can't remember.
All I can say is that I know that Rep. Butler was the mayor at the time.
No.
Because he had a strong hand in drafting these.
Just after that. But it, I always remember, when I was on council, there was always kind of a set of principles, and they were somewhat prioritized, you know, sort of led by the thought of, which I think is said here really in the first two points, which is, you make decisions for the best long-term interest of all Lake Forest citizens. And we get a lot of interesting proposals and ideas and planning, you know, of whatever form that comes up through boards and commissions and other things. And I remember when I was first on council, after having been on zoning board and some other things, boy, this is really confusing, how to make, how do you make a decision on some of these things? And I picked up a form of this, and I remember it saying, decisions should be centered on what is in the best interest of Lake Forest residents in the long term. And I started thinking about, gee, are these decisions going to make sense 20, 30, 40, or even 50 years from now? Because we make a subdivision decision like this, that's pretty much forever for our grandchildren's generation and beyond. And so, it has to pass a lot of basic tests about whether this is really something that fits in our community, it's in the best interest of all residents. And I've found, ever since then, it's been a lot easier to make decisions. So, just a personal reflection on this note, this minute from the archives.
Mayor Lansing, that's exactly the kind of addition that might benefit this document. I think it looks, it looks like it's something that has enormous potential, and I would encourage us to take the time to take a look at it, see if, I mean, I love adding that temporal element, you know, using that long-term screen. I think that could be very helpful. I've already drawn red lines through things, highlighted things, wanting to change multiple numbers of words, and it's, you know, I don't even know how many words are on the
It was your first language.
It's pretty much my only language. For example, I don't have a clue what Options Management is, in caps, assuming caps appropriately, not, not made up. Don't have any idea what Options Management is. I'm sure somebody does, someone can talk to me about it. But if I had a
Tim would, from a financial standpoint.
Okay. But if I, I mean, I'm assuming, you'll look at a bunch of different things and figure out how to sort through them, but I don't even know if that's right. But if I have a document that's telling me how to do my job using Options Management, I'm going to have to know what that is. So, you know, there's that kind of thing that, maybe it makes sense, and I just am not up to date on that. But I would love to have us, you know, take a crack at this, tidy it up. I don't think it needs to be longer, but there might be some things we would, we would add to it. There's some tenses that should be made more parallel, for example. Small things, but, you know, things that if, if I were going to look at it at every meeting, and if it was in a packet, it would be nice to have it tidied up.
I have a recommendation.
Yeah.
Before we fall into the two-hour trap
I was not going to do that.
Of discussing these eight dot points, one at a time, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us.
Absolutely not.
That we develop a committee of one, headed up by Alderman Beidler, to take a whack at this.
I would be happy to do it, I'd love some help.
All right, the mayor?
You want to do it?
There you go.
We're going to have a one-one document. Rob, it's up to you to decide.
Let's have a little subcommittee of Prue and I.
All right, Rob and I will do it. Okay, good.
What a perfect choice.
When do you want it, when do you want it done by?
When we're ready.
Fine. That's exactly the kind of timetable I love. Thank you.
I'm thinking, May 2019.
Do I have them?
Yeah, by a couple of days. Yeah.
Rob, I just want to thank the city manager for finding this. It was very insightful and helpful. I hope we can do this, keep it in front of us on a more timely basis.
Use it.
It's a good thought. Maybe I'll add the Finance Committee Chair, too.
You can't, unless you want to do it.
You're right, so, okay.
I suggest we make, take a crack at it.
We can do this.
And then, and then bring it back and discuss it.
You're probably going to leave Reisenberg and Tack out of it, I'm thinking. Just a thought.
Now, you
Out of it.
We're going to make you
Oh, boy.
Spend time.
We'll, we'll bring it back.
Okay, well, thanks for the provocation, provocation.
We won't do anything before the holidays, but we'll get together after the holiday.
Okay. All right. Okay. I've completely lost track of where we are.
Almost at the end right now.
That's new business. Any additional items for council discussion? I don't think so. May I have a motion then for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Don't worry, the Gordon stuff, I swear, it's not.